Hi, ladies and gentlemen, I'll call the meeting of the Buchanan City Council to order. We want to thank everyone for being here as always. It's always good to see all of our citizens here, or even county citizens, for the City of Buchanan business. Before we get started and start the meeting, we do have a public hearing. The public hearing is regarding ordinance 398, the amended building permit fees. It has been published, and council, you'll see in your packet, the advertising and the published that went into the paper, as it should be done as by normal process. So at this point, what I'll do is ask if there are any citizens that are currently here or would like to either speak on behalf of ordinance 398, amending the building permit fees, or against that ordinance. If you would like to speak, please take the, come to the podium, state your name and what your opposition or support is.
If I read correctly on the, on the paper there, this is supposed to be the second and final greeting? Is this not the first?
No, last week was the first.
Last, last, last council meeting, you said the next one would be the first.
Not that I'm aware of.
No.
No.
But anyhow, so be it. These amended fees, the building fees, if we've got, if we've got a surplus in the budget, if we've got money to give the mayor and money to give the council to do different things, why do we need to raise fees on the citizens? Somebody made the comment at one of the meetings here not too long ago, that, well, if you put on a $30,000 roof, it's going to cost you so much. Someone who lives, our senior citizens, in the city that has, has a house they have to put a $30,000 roof on, or in their later years, they're on a fixed income, why do we need to gouge them? What are they going to get for a building permit fee on a $30,000 roof? What do they get from it? If we've got a budget surplus, why do we need to raise fees? Yeah, it's from years ago, that's fine. We're doing fine, we've got money, we've got excess money. Why do we need to raise fees on, on the citizens? Why do we want to condemn them because they want to upgrade their home? They want to fix a bathroom, they want to do a roof, they want to put a fence around the yard. Why do we need, why do we need to get more money to do that when they're not going to get anything from it? Unless I'm missing something, somebody show me why.
And Mr. Skidmore, that would be in opposition of the ordinance.
That's exactly right, yes.
We'll make that part of the minutes. I could answer that. It's not so much that we're trying to increase for revenue, but what we are trying to do, and what the city's been doing for the past six years, is trying to determine how we can help facilitate dilapidated properties, dilapidated buildings, and to increase some of the teeth, so to speak, or enforcement of making some of our properties within the City of Buchanan better. And that means that in order to do so, in order to raise properties, or to buy properties that are either vacant, dilapidated, or just untaken, not, let me say a little bit more on that, that a lot of property owners don't live here in the City of Buchanan, they may live in another state or whatever, and it's very hard for us to enforce or make them comply to the ordinances that we have as far as these buildings go. So technically, what this fee does, it actually increases and gets us to a place within our budget and within that department, to not only help facilitate those needs, as I just said, with the zoning officer, but also for the city to look forward to, within four or five years, maybe having a, a fund that we can start looking at some of the properties or vacant, dilapidated or vacant homes, or just untaking care of homes that we may be able to purchase and use, either for organizations that may be able to do it through certain housing, or just tear it down and have it, another facility built. That's technically the reason why the building ordinance, and besides, it hasn't, again, another issue that has not, the building fees have not been looked at for over a decade. I understand your concern there, and as far as any senior citizen issues, or somebody on a fixed income perhaps, we do have some leeway to work with the citizens on that. We're not going to try to force anyone out of anything. In fact, we're going to hopefully be able to facilitate cleaning up of their houses through organizations or work groups like churches do and all that. So we're not trying to hurt anyone here, we're going to try to help, but I hope that answers some of your question on what it is, I figured it probably wouldn't. But that's the, that's the reasoning behind increases in the fees, and to get us up to, up to standards for the 21st century.
Well, if you've got properties that are, are below standard for the city, why can't you condemn them and have them sold and tax saved?
I'll give you a perfect example, that would be the lot over there by the academy school, what is it, Barber and Spring?
Ritchie and Tucker.
Ritchie and Tucker. It took three years just to get to start to tear that down, and the neighborhood there was really having to fit with that. The city had no teeth within any ordinance to make that building disappear.
But how does raising fees on, on every citizen give you teeth to tear that building down?
It would cost us about $5,000.
You know, you've got, you've got a man right here in the city that travels the city, doing work all through the city, don't have a driver's license, they don't, they don't have the proper license to work, and they run through here, they move equipment all hours of the night, nobody bothers them, they don't have to commit to move equipment, but yet you worry about somebody else's property? How come those teeth don't apply whenever they need to be? I mean, when you've got a big excavator sitting right there in the middle of town, and you've got to have a low weight truck to get it through town, and we've got how many police officers on board, and you don't see that being moved through town?
I can't answer that.
Well, the mayor should answer that.
I'm trying to answer the question that you posed to us in your opposition.
But that's part of that question.
That's, that's part of the question, you know, we need.
Well, I think A, B, C, or D in that question, so I, what I try to do is explain that to you, but if you'd like more information on that, Vincent Smith, our zoning officer, more than happy to say about that, or Mr. Rock. I'm just trying to formulate a further question. We appreciate your opposition, and we appreciate you expressing that to us, so we know that as well. Are there any other citizens that would like to speak on behalf or in, or against the ordinance 398 for public hearing? I'm not hearing any.
I just want to ask a question.
To who?
To you. When was the last time, how many years ago was this increased?
The last time, when Mike, Dave told me she might have been on then, when was the last time the building fees were even looked at or discussed?
I think it's been two and a half decades.
About two and a half decades?
Eighty-six was?
Nineteen eighty-six.
Nineteen eighty-six.
That was a great year.
Three decades.
I don't want to start another conversation, I just wanted to.
Yeah, so they hadn't even looked at or discussed, it's nineteen eighty-six. Mr. Cowan, are you, please come to the floor, and are you for or against?
I'm against the building permit fees.
That's what we're having, public and.
All right, so I was looking over the building permit fees, we came down and got a list of the various increases that they're going to be having, and if you have a project that's going to be $19,999, it'll come out, you times that by .011, that would come out to about nine, $219.99. Now, the old rate would have had that at, I believe, $40, because it would have been $2 per thousand, which would be a total increase of $449.98, or excuse me, it would be an increase of 449.98%. Now, on margin two, it would have 400, or excuse me, $49,999 would be times by .009, that would come out to a total of $449.99, which would be an, which would be an increase from 350.04% from the old rate. Margin three, you would have 999, or excuse me, $99,999, you times that by .007, that'd be an increase of 250.01% from the old rate, and that would come to a total of $699.99. Then on margin four, you would have $100,000, times that by .006, that'd come out to an increase of $200, or excuse me, 200%, which would be $600 total for building permit fees. Now, those are really hefty increases that are being implemented on all the people of Buchanan, all the businesses in Buchanan. And the very concerning thing to me is that it's going to discourage a lot of businesses from coming in here with these new rate increases. And basically, if we look at how much it's going to be, all of those rates that I previously listed come out to around $11 per thousand, you have $10 per thousand, $6.99 per thousand, and they have $6 per thousand, which are basically, it's the old rates that were proposed by you and I believe also by the building inspector, except it's just masked by this new percentage that now is being proposed. So basically, it's the same as what we had before, except now we're presenting, presenting the percentage. And really, I just personally don't believe that it's necessary whatsoever, and another interesting thing about this is that if you have 400, or $49,999, you times that by .009, that would come out to a total in building permit fees of $499.99. Now, if you pay $1 more, you'd be charged $350. So just for paying, I guess you buy a roll of toilet paper or something. But the really, it's just disgusting, it's $99, it would be a difference of $99.99 just for $1 on your building project, and for such a huge difference, I mean, it just doesn't, it doesn't make any sense, it's fuzzy math, it doesn't make any sense. And I personally believe that the old rates were better, they shouldn't have been changed in the first place, and I ask that you reject this new building permit fee increase.
Thank you, Mr. Cowan. We appreciate that, and we appreciate the math as well. Anybody else that would like to speak on behalf or against the ordinance 398 on public hearing? All right, hearing none then, I will close the public hearing for ordinance 398, and I will call to order the Buchanan City Council regular meeting. Again, thank you all for being here, as we always do. Before we begin the meeting, we'll start with a moment's silence and prayer meditation, and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And from what I can tell, I think our college students must have gone through, are they on exams? Do we have any college students with us tonight? All right, ladies and gentlemen, as you see, we have a very busy agenda for tonight, so I'm going to jump right into it. I will remind the citizens that this is the time of the year where we start getting a lot of our considerations for the upcoming year, and for the budget sessions, and a lot of the things you're going to see that we're going to have discussions tonight on. So again, thank you everyone for being here. What I'll start off is our recognized guests, and we're honored to have with us Mr. Todd Dingus, a certified public accountant, and he's going to discuss, along with, I'll introduce our board members as well, I have Gene Wells, who is a sanitary board member, we have Tim Rock with us, who is the sanitary plant operator, and we have Mr. Sam Lublow, who is our engineer, and also very much advised person and semi-retired, half-retired, Sam Lublow from the sanitary department as well. Gentlemen, I don't know who wants to start off, I believe it would be starting off with Todd, Mr. Dingus?
Gene Fry.
You do have the, did I say Gene Fry?
He said Dean Wells.
Oh, Gene Fry, I'm sorry, sorry. Mr. Dingus, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, good evening, council. My name is Todd Dingus, I'm with the accounting firm of Smith, Cochrane &amp; Hicks CPAs in Charleston, and our firm was engaged, among other things, with the city to look at the sanitary rates that the city charged, which is the sewer bills. As you know, the sanitary board operates the City of Buchanan sanitary sewer system. We are under the regulations of the Public Service Commission, the DEP, and a variety of other agencies, and we are required to not only adequately maintain and operate the system, but make sure that we are in compliance with all the regulatory items. So what my job with the city was, is at the end of each fiscal year, which in this case closed June 30th of 2015, I looked at the existing operations of the City of Buchanan, compared that with the upcoming operations and needs of the system, and also looked at the requirements of the, of any new legislation that may impact user rates. And right now, if you're a minimum user in the City of Buchanan, which means you use 2,000 gallons or less water, and that's how your sewer bill is billed, it's based on how much water you use, your bill is $16.60, that's if you use 2,000 gallons or less. Now, an average customer uses approximately 4,000 gallons, and that bill currently is That's what a customer would pay on a monthly basis. Now, as a part of my study, I took into consideration not only the existing operations, but future concerns. The city does a very good job in doing a lot of maintenance and a lot of capital improvements in-house with money that it, it has generated, and it reinvests in its system. I see a lot of utilities throughout the state that don't do this, they don't do proper maintenance, they don't do proper investing back into the system, and they have to do a huge bond issue, or some, some other type of investment strategy to recoup and to, to get the system back up in operations. When I completed my study, it appeared like that the city needed close to a 30% rate increase on, on its existing rates. We had several meetings and conversations with the sanitary board, we looked, we sharpened our pencil and looked at that a little more closely about what the needs are, balanced that with what, what revenues will be generated, and what we're, or what I'm recommending to, and did recommend to the sanitary board, is that they consider a 20% rate increase on sanitary sewer bills. Now, what that does on a, on a, on a per customer basis, it would take the minimum bill, if you use less than 2,000 gallons, you would go on a monthly bill from $16.60 up to $19.92, which is a $3.32 increase per month. So the, the minimum users, which are a lot of households that have less than three people, will use the minimum usage, your bill would be increased about approximately, well, it would be increased $3.32 a month. Now, the average customer that uses 4,000 gallons, that rate increase would go from $30.50 to $36.60, which is a $6.10 increase per month on, on, on the sanitary rates. And obviously, customers use a variety of usage, so it's, that, that would be the average. So if, basically, what we're recommending is a 20% across-the-board increase, so if you happen to be a large user, five or 10,000 gallons, you would just look at your average bill, and it would go up approximately 20%. Now, currently, the city, if you look at all the water utility, or all the sewer utilities throughout the state, there are about 328 utilities that operate wastewater systems, whether they be cities, public service districts, or private entities. Currently, the City of Buchanan ranks 77th out of 328, from lowest bill to highest bill. So you're, you're in the bottom fourth right now, you're 77th out of 328. If the city does increase rates by 20%, you will jump from 77 to about 135 out of 328. So the city, through its management, leadership, and, and the hard work of the staff and employees, you've been able to operate this facility a long time at a very reasonable rate without any issues with, with, with the system. That says a lot to the folks that are involved in it. Now, you may want to know when the rates increased last. Your last sewer rate increase was in 2010, that's when the rates increased last. So you, we're from 2010 to 2016 now, so we're about six years out, operating under the rates that were approved then. There was also one major piece of legislation that passed last year that requires that utilities operate a working capital fund, or maintain a working capital fund, which means that the city not only is required to pay the bills, pay the bond payments, and maintain its bond reserves, it's required to generate basically one-eighth of the operating revenues as a surplus. So even if, if nothing else was considered, all utilities in the state have to address this working capital fund that the legislature passed last year. So that was a part of the increase, but at this, at this point, we're recommending, after considering a higher rate increase at one point, we're looking and making a recommendation of about a 20% increase. Dollar-wise, that would generate about $295,000 annually for the sanitary board. The sanitary board operates right now on about $1.75 million, so it would increase that number approximately close to $300,000.
Todd, if I, if I may, and it's a little confusing when we talk about where we rank in the state as far as the other utilities, because you make it sound like we're 77th from the top, no? Can you explain a little bit better for the citizens that what we're talking about is we're 77th from the bottom?
Yes, yes. If one is the lowest, and 328 is the highest, right now the city is at 37, so we're in the bottom fourth. It will go up to 135 out of 328, so.
Which still leaves us in the bottom third.
Yeah, approximately, yeah. The lower you rank, the better off you are for the citizens. That's the lower, yes, the cost of the citizens, that is the lowest.
And one other thing I'll ask you then, is to explain the, the surplus that the state has now mandated on us. They did that to less, less legislature, we were already kind of anticipating that because they were talking about it for so long.
Right.
But really, what the, what the leaders down at Charleston decided is that for any issues that may come up, any emergency issues, that we have a surplus sitting in an account, so that if there is something that comes up, the city doesn't necessarily, as a municipality, have to pay it. I might remind you of the West Virginia Wesleyan College pipe burst about three years ago, the city had to because we did not have, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michael, did not have, the sanitary department did not have the funds to do so, so actually, the City of Buchanan citizens had to loan the money to the sanitary department to fix that repair. That's kind of the reasoning behind, I believe, the Charleston issue as well. Mr. Dingus, I appreciate your report. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Dingus?
Thank you for explaining it in such simple terms.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes.
Thanks, thank you, Todd. With this anticipated rate increase that you're recommending, and that the board would be recommending, what would your anticipation be as far as when will we be needing to do another rate increase? Five, six, seven years maybe?
You need to look at it annually, but in, in practical terms, it should be good for several years. I'm a little hesitant to say, not knowing what the legislature may do in, in a future session, but it's not a situation where the rate that we're passing right now will only get us to tomorrow. We have built some future cash flow in, in the analysis to at least get us several more years down the road.
My question also would be, now, BSC, Public Service Commission, also has a recommendation on how, how often the rate should be seen, looked at, and you said yearly, but they had also made recommendations about every three years, you should have a 1% to 2% increase cost of inflation, am I correct on that? They, I know they had presented that to two different boards we had in a dual meeting before, is that still their philosophy and thinking?
They, well, the Senate Bill 234 that was passed, a lot of the thought in that legislation was utilities tended to wait until they were broke before they started the process. And the process does take time to go through. If, if the city decided tonight to move forward with this, which is not on the agenda for any ordinance, but you have to go through certain procedures, and there are certain requirements that we go through, we have a reading, a second reading, a public hearing, then there are a period of time for protests to be received, so the actual implementation of the new rate doesn't start for several months. So you have to look at the timing of, of any increase, and this working capital fund allows you opportunities so that management, council, and the leaders of a, of a utility can examine why we're having cash flow problems, is it just a situation where we may have had some capital improvements that we needed to do, or some emergency items that needed to be addressed, or do we have a serious situation that we need to look at raising rates?
Very good, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Dingus?
Yes, I have a question. Could you comment on our current bond issue, and how much longer we have to, I mean, that kind of plays into this last question about when we might need another rate increase?
Yes. Okay, right now, the city has a 1986 issue that pays off in 2025, and then a 2009 issue that also pays out in 2025, so we're, we're still about 10, or nine years away from completely being repaid from the indebtedness that we incurred back in 86, and then also in a refunding in '09. So about nine years, and then our bonds are paid.
And that would free up a couple hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, right now, the city currently pays about $240,000 a year, principal and interest payments on the debt, so about $20,000 a month we pay on bond payments. So when that bond's completely paid out, the city could have that money, but that's assuming that we don't have to issue any debt at that time.
Your plan, your plan would be nine years older.
Yeah, your plan would be nine years older, and, and you never know what regulations will, will be, that you have to address.
And you also don't know what's going to happen with your sewer lines, is that right?
That's correct.
It's a big issue. Right, just like at college.
Thank you, Mr. Dingus, we appreciate your time and effort, I know that is a very comprehensive study, and is that available to the public as far as the study? At some point it would be, if the board would proceed forward?
Yes, yes.
Very good. Mr. Rock, I believe you have something to present on behalf of the sanitary department?
Mr. Lublow is going to.
Mr. Lublow.
I'd like to just make some comments as follow-up to Todd's remarks and recommendations about the operation of the sewer department, kind of give an overview and a status report of our facilities, and this discussion of, of the bond and how, how old the facilities are. But our, our approach, we basically have two, two goals, and the first is to serve our customers, and the second is to satisfy regulations. And we seek to do both of them in the most cost-effective and performance-effective manner that we possibly can, and we believe that we can accomplish that by being proactive and doing as much of the work in-house. And I'm very pleased to hear Todd comment about how we're relatively unusual with the aggressiveness with which we do in-house work. And we believe in doing constant, regular, not only just maintenance, but repairs and upgrades, and we believe in, when we undertake an upgrade, to make it better, not, not repair it so it's as good as it was before, but to make it better both for the customers and for the operation of, of the system. The status of our facilities, the treatment. The status of our facilities, the treatment plant, the 1986 bond issue, we put the plant into operation in October of 1987. There is a view of the plant. You took that picture this week?
This week.
So, the plant looks in pretty good condition. Design capacity of the plant, it's 2.5 million gallons per day. We can handle a flow up to about 5 million, and we do get 5 million. But our average daily flow on an annual basis is 1.3 million gallons per day. And you look at that in comparison to the 2.5 million gallons per day design capacity. So, we're at about half of the design capacity. Now, when we have wet weather and rainfall, then we get more flow than we're supposed to get, and that can go up to 5 million gallons. And we struggle at 5 million gallons, but we can basically handle 5 million gallons at the plant. Our treatment capabilities, performance is extraordinary. Plant was intended to be better than the typical sewage treatment plant because of the particular conditions of the Buchanan River, of the low-flow conditions that occur, and the quality of the river. And they've made the requirements more stringent since the plant was designed. But we regularly meet those limits. We have had issues with DEP. In fact, our last permit cycle, we had quite severe differences with them, and objected and protested. And we maintained the very severe limits that they imposed, but they were restrained to certain times when there was very, very low flow in the river and very low discharge from the plant. So, and they said to us that they didn't expect capital improvements being required to satisfy that requirement. The overall condition of the plant, I think, is, as you can see there, is pretty evident from the pictures, is excellent. Even though it's 28 and 1/2 years old, it's in very good condition. And again, as Todd noted, we've done just a series of capital maintenance, repair projects. They kind of blend together to upgrade the plant. And the plant's performance capabilities are definitely better now than they were when it went into operation. And you have a lot of concrete basins, and they haven't deteriorated. And we have equipment, and you have to replace that equipment, and we have replaced equipment. So, we need to be able to continue to do these in-house maintenance, upgrade, repair projects. We have several of those kinds of projects that we need to do, and we need the resources to be able to do that. But whereas often, at this age, you're looking at a completely new facility, we have no reason to be thinking in those terms. Okay. We'll look, no. We'll look at some of the things that we've done, but to go on and comment, Mayor, you noted about the collection system. We have about 65 miles of sewers, 16 pump stations. Our line crew, since 1990, past 26 years, has built 22 miles of sewers out of 65. We have others that were built in 86, 87, and there was another major project in 1961. Some of them are still good and in use. But we also have a number of sewers that were in early 1900s, old clay pipe, and some of them are okay, and some of them are not. But the investment that we've made in building new sewers has put our collection system in pretty good condition. But we need to keep doing that. We need to, we've been spending $200,000, $250,000 a year on replacing, upgrading sewers, old sewers. And again, that's driven by those two goals that I noted earlier, to provide service to our customers. That's the first thing. We've got backups and problems with service, but also to meet regulation, which in regard to sewers is extraneous flow of water, extra water getting into the system. And it's because we have been able to build these sewers and get rid of extraneous flow, that our flow at the plant is still 1.3 million gallons per day. And it has been at that level ever since we put the plant into operation. And that's in spite of the fact that we've got more customers and are more effective at getting sewage from in-town, our collection system, to the plant. So, where you would have expected that the system would, our plant capacity would be being used up over that time, we've taken out more than we've added on. We do have four combined sewer overflows, which are permitted and monitored, which are places where when the capacity of the sewers is exceeded by rainfall, we have overflows. DEP keeps constant pressure on us. We had an inspection last week. We need to keep working on replacing the older sewers or poorly performed sewers in order to reduce the number of overflow. And we've had, which is evidenced by the average flow to the plant, had quite a lot of success. And we want to keep doing that. Personnel, we have basically three crews. We have a plant operation crew, which actually runs the treatment plant. We're required to have two operators with class III certification. We actually have four. So, we've got some security in that. Also adds to our capabilities to have that kind of skill. We have a maintenance crew, which is responsible for all our rolling stock, responsible for the pump stations. They've done, have built new or done major upgrades on almost all of our pump stations. And they do the construction work on our plant projects. We have a line crew that has nine members. We have two, four man construction workers. And we have another person that takes care of our mapping, which is just an invaluable asset to us. They have just tremendous capabilities and skills, which again, you'll be able to see with some of our pictures. But it's very important to be able to maintain, hold these people. They have an awful lot of knowledge, and some of them have an awful lot of time in the facility. But we've also got some really promising young people that you want to keep there. So, we have a number of activities that we've accomplished, most of them in the last several years, and a couple that are older, if we can just kind of go through them. Okay, this, okay. The first thing that we're going to talk about is the belt press. It's been a major project that we undertook. Oh, 2012, we had this building, which was a three-bay garage, three open bays. That was underused. It was built when the plant was built in 86, 87, and never fully utilized since that time. And when we decided that we needed to change from the drying beds to the belt press, we looked at opportunities to how we were going to do that. And one of our crew members suggested this building. So, first step, we had to figure out how we were going to get this belt press in the building. And this slide doesn't make much sense yet. But we put these four pieces of steel piping in. We have a roof on this building. We couldn't get a crane and set it down in the building. So, we put these pipes in. So, there's the belt press. It's about eight-ton piece of equipment, pretty major piece of equipment. And we brought it in and set it down on these steel pipes and slid it into the building. Then, kind of the jump, not only do we have to put in a piece of equipment in the building, but we had to do the plumbing, piping. And here, it shows the cooperation between our different crews. So, there's all this pipe work, of course, wasn't done by our maintenance crew. It was done by our line crew. So, this picture. And the next picture, you can see the complexity of the plumbing and electrical conduit that was required to support this. Then, we go to the next picture, and now you see the piece of equipment, the belt press, actually in place. So, we were able to get it off of those steel pipes onto the supports. So, internally, we had to do these things. That's the electrical service. That's the sludge pump system, and that's the water system. So, all that work had to fit together, to put together, to make the belt press. And the belt press has been really a dramatic improvement to us in operating the plant to satisfy regulatory requirements.
Sam, before you move on, can you explain to everyone what exactly the belt press does?
Yes. It's part of our sludge process, how we dry the sludge. And it's very liquid as it is taken out of the system. And so, it goes on to this piece of equipment that may be 1.5% solids and just running. And it comes off at about 20, 22% solids, which is solid. And we can load it into a dump truck and haul it.
Very good.
It's a major aspect of our operations, handling the sludge.
Right.
So, we went from that project. Actually, there's something else that happened in between, which we'll see. But this is the pistogrip project, which that's a proprietary name of a piece of equipment, and it's grit removal. So, when the raw sewage come in, it may contain gravel or sand, grit. And the process, the treatment process, does nothing to address grit. So, you remove it early on, and we take it to a landfill. So, the roof leak in this building had a lot of other problems, too. And DEP had criticized us for the drainage control. This area right here is where the septic tank haulers dump. And if they had a spill, it was just out on the open ground. The grit was put into the dumpster here. We had a buggy that you rolled out and dumped in it. And if you weren't careful, you went in the dumpster with the buggy. And there was no drainage control underneath the buggy or under the dumpster. So, we did a renovation of that whole process. And that's what it looks like now. And look at the next one. That's the same view. And you can see that we have a concrete pad with a drain, and another concrete pad with a curb and a drain. Much better building, more appropriate for the site. The septic tank haulers really like it because it helps them unload your trucks, and they're not as liable for issues. How the building looks like inside. We added the auger, so you don't have to use buggy anymore. And that's the electrical panel that's associated with this equipment. Back up. Okay, next. Okay, as part of the pistogrip project, we had to have a means, we didn't have any place for the drainage to go. So, we had to put in a pump station. And so, we had a drainage pump station at one end of the plant, but not at the other end of the plant. So, we put one in at the upper end, and we encountered some conditions that made it difficult, which is why we had that piece of equipment, which we rented for a week, and got the hole dug, and we're putting the concrete in the hole. And that's what the hole looked like, and that's why we rented that piece of equipment. That hole was about 15 feet deep, and only about the first 30 feet were soil. The rest of it's solid rock, hard, hard rock. So, we had to hammer that out and set, and that's what that pump station looks like now. Okay, Mayor, you mentioned the tennis courts, and some of you have seen this because we made a presentation about this to counsel when we asked for some financial support relative to this project. But we had a pipe failure near the college that threatened to take service away from the college, probably 2/3 of the college. And first of all, we managed that situation without having spills. And there had been major fill over top of the pipe since it was installed, this pipe was installed in 1961. Also, the dam had been raised 3 feet, so the water table was 3 feet higher. So, we had serious problems. And, I mean, of course, we had our box protection, but we also had well points, and we also had sheet filing. But you can just, this picture just kind of gives you the general view of the difficult circumstances that our crew was facing with this project. And then, continuing to work there, and we did, back up. We did put this pipe in. We struggled about two weeks before we could get to the pipe. But we finally did get to the pipe, and we put in a new piece of pipe, and it blew out just upstream from us. And we spent $50,000 attempting this repair in a month of time. And we changed our mind from the whole approach. Next picture. That kind of gives you some idea of the difficulties that we faced. That kind of gives you some idea of the difficulties that we faced as well. We did save the excavator.
Is that what you call a West Virginia sinkhole?
Yes. Okay, so then we made the decision to undertake a project where we were going to pump around this site. We were able to abandon about two thousand feet of pipe. Well, actually, about a thousand feet was abandoned, and we rerouted another thousand feet back to this. And so we're putting in another pump station. This is a similar undertaking as the one with the rock at the sewer plant. But we were so afraid of the wet sandy conditions, and both of those pictures just show us preparing the hole. And again, we had to bring in a crane to handle the weight of this concrete, and we're setting it in place and continuing to set it in place. And then, that's what it looks like now. And we built this stadium so people could watch the operation. No, that's down at the college. What is it?
Kelp F. First Stadium.
Okay, so now the next, and these are the final ones. Five or six pictures are just old line projects that just show some of the difficult conditions that we encountered. And this is up on Shawnee Drive, and just how tight it is against this house and against the creek and the owner was, that's not the owner, that's our crew foreman, but the owner was right there most of the time watching what we did. And that's what it looked like a year later. We had a terrible time planting those flowers, but, okay. And here again, and we use the trench boxes and the protection, and these are just very difficult conditions. And that demonstrates the capabilities of our crew and the twenty-two miles of sewers that we built. They're not all like that, but these are some of the conditions that we've actually encountered. So we're, we need to, and we're done with that. We just need to maintain the capability and the resources to do the work at the plant and to do the work on the lines so that we continue to serve our customers and satisfy regulation. I mean, we understand, somebody involved in it has commented to us that a neighboring system resisted some of the DEP regulations. The EPA got involved, and they spent eight or nine million upgrading their plant, making it bigger, which we don't think is the right approach. We think upgrading the sewers. And then after they got that done, they're spending millions and millions more building sewers. So we think that the approach that we've taken has been very cost-effective for the city, but you can't quit. You quit, and then you are, in pretty short order, facing major capital costs and looking at big rate increases.
Is that all you got, Sam?
Yeah, I got, there's another page here.
Thank you, Sam. I'm also going to ask Board Member Gene Wells, who sat on the board.
Gene Frye.
How long have you sat on the board, sir?
What record? I didn't hear you.
How long have you sat on the board?
Four or five years. I'm not sure. Maybe, I'm not sure.
Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Sam has done, his engineering is second to none. And I think by the comments that the inspections that the plant receives and the comments of how well this plant is operated stands for itself. And not a dollar is spent that is not looked at on how we do it right, but how we do it cost-effective. So it's great working with these guys, and you don't have to second-guess or, you know, what they do. And it's all fought out, well-done, and it makes being on the board easy, although sometimes it's not. But it's a very good operation. And I just spent the day, Tim and I just spent the day in Morgantown at the Water Quality Board. And I understand Morgantown is going through a growth, but they're looking at an eighty-eight percent rate increase right now and eighty-five million dollar capital expenditure. And that's not to build a new plant, that's just to modify the plant to keep up with the demand. So it's, there are things coming down the pipe that sooner or later is going to hit us that we have to plan for. And these requirements that the DEP and the EPA are coming are not going to get less, they're going to get more. And so if we get behind, we don't ever catch up. So I think by spinning as you go is better than coming and looking at a forty million dollar planted rebuild. That is really expensive. So I think our approach is right.
Thank you, Mr. Frye. I appreciate that. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Ludlow or?
I just have a second question. Counsel, comments? Sam, and Tim, I thank you, too. The serving the customer, oh, I wish you, Mr. Dingus, serving the customer and satisfying the regulations, that's the regulations of DEP. And now you just answered my question, Gene, because they are getting harder and harder and harder, okay? So, and I actually enjoyed that very much. It's been a while since I've worked with Sam on this water board, and I've really enjoyed the update about doing this. It's not an easy job. It's a very complex job. And we're lucky to have the employees that can do this work. How often are we hired outside to come in and do something? Yeah, so I'm extremely pleased and happy and safe that our sewage is going in the right direction.
I'd agree with that. And yes, there are a lot of regulations that are now being state mandated and nationally mandated for our sanitary department, particularly any dischargeers into the river. We kind of got lucky that we didn't have that American Waterways Act passed, which would actually take away the rights of the river to us and even probably more stringent requirements. So yes, we're very fortunate with that. Counsel, any other comments?
Sam, what year did you start at the city?
Sam?
What year did you start?
What year did you start, Sam?
Nineteen eighty-eight. Well, it should maybe name it the Ludlow Sewer Plant.
I don't know if I'd want a sewer plant named after me, Dave.
All right, Counsel, any other questions or comments? Let's go ask Katie.
What is Sam's official title? Is he retired, has he had retired?
That is a good question. What is the official title? Engineer, sanitary engineer?
He is. He does consulting, or consulting sanitary.
Consulting.
We're blessed to still have.
All right. In that case, Counsel, unless there's any other questions, this is all FY information. You can go see Sam at any time. He'll give you a tour of the plant. This plant is also open to the citizens of Buchanan. Call ahead, and we'll give you a tour. You can go out there and take a look at it. It's really, it's really a cool process. I will mention next Tuesday, we'll be out doing a video, kind of like what we did with the water department, so you can see the process a lot closer as opposed to still pictures. So please take this information. We need to have some resolution to this within the next two council meetings as far as how we are going to proceed. Keep it in mind that the rates, there's a time process here. It could be quite. So please, do your research, take a look at Elkins and what they're spending, take a look at Morgantown, what they're spending, see the different ways that they operate and how it is that we're unique in the way that we operate here. And then let's get back with that, okay? All right, thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen, for all of your presentation today. Mr. Dingus, thank you for coming down and being with us. We appreciate all the work that you do. All right, moving on to our next recognized guest, then we have Mr. Robert Hitten of the Upshur County Development Authority Executive Director to talk about a power grant application. Mr. Hitten, you're up, sir. You have the floor.
And first, thank you for allowing me to be on the agenda tonight and speak about the tremendous opportunity that we have for the city of Buchanan right now. Unfortunately, this opportunity comes about because of a decline in the coal industry. But however, you know, with something good, maybe, or with something bad, maybe there could be something good out of it. I believe that this is one of those opportunities. First, let me preface on this entire project, the word whirlwind suits it well. This thing has just taken off at a pace that has been hard to keep up with. And I know Bob Skinner, our president of our board, can attest to that. We found out about the power grant program at a roundtable discussion, details of which, a roundtable discussion about February, on February twenty-fourth. And at that time, we hadn't, an FFO was, had not been released, which is a federal funding, federal funding opportunity announcement. And so there were still some details that we didn't know what was going to be a part of this power program. We knew that it was going to be between forty-five and fifty million, but we really didn't understand how it's going to work, what projects are going to be eligible, who's going to be eligible, and if it was something that our project, from the development authority standpoint, could go after. This project, or this power grant opened up not, it was supposed to open up right after February twenty-fourth. Well, it didn't open up until March seventeenth. And how this grant works is that it's a first-come, first-served basis. It's on a rolling application. So he who gets to the pot first wins, or she, no need to mean any delineation there. So we worked very hard once that was announced. And what's interesting about this is that we were told that it would be a one-page pre-application. And that was not so true. So we figured it comes out on the seventeenth, we'll work really hard and do whatever it takes to get it in on the eighteenth. Well, the pre-application looked, smelled, and felt like a full application, and I believe it was pretty close to it. However, we ended up getting a pre-application in within three weeks. And the project I'm going to talk about tonight is a brick-and-mortar project, it's a construction project, it's a building. And to have an application pulled together in three weeks for brick-and-mortar is pretty impressive. The opportunity that we have in doing that, and being very quick and dedicating some overtime to that, is that our application ID number after we submitted was number three. I hope that's not random. So I don't think it is. I think that we're actually third, third out of, third application in the hopper. So, you know, I say that is because a lot of this stuff has happened really fast, and a lot of the stuff that we do as a development authority, it's like an iceberg. You see a little bit. And that's because a lot of the projects that we work on, they may be grant-dependent, which is always a toss-up. They may be dealing with businesses that are coming to the area, which is always a toss-up. And so it's hard to say which projects and which efforts are going to come to fruition and become reality. And so we're very careful about which ones we put out there in the hopes that we don't let too many people down and get too many people's excitements and false hopes. But I feel very confident in this project. One, because we're in there very, very early, and two, because of what this project does. One of the things about, and to give you an idea, POWER is an acronym, just like everything else that comes from the federal government. POWER actually stands for Partnership for Opportunity in Workforce and Economic Revitalization. Okay? And it's intended for just specifically Appalachian Regional Commission areas, which West Virginia actually, all fifty-five counties are in the ARC region. And then they also are only coal-impacted communities, which shrinks that competition rate. So we're actually amongst a smaller pool of applicant, of potential applicants. I'm going to go down the list of what, this is exactly the language from the grant FFO, what they're looking for in projects. And when I talk about the project next, you'll see how we become really competitive. Developing projects that diversify local and regional economies, create new jobs in new or existing industries. Building partnerships to attract and invest in the economic future of a coal-impacted community. Increasing the capacity and other technical assistance that foster long-term economic growth. Supporting the creation of new businesses and jobs in a variety of industry sectors, including advanced manufacturing, agriculture's one, energy, information technology, healthcare, telecommunications, recreation, transportation, and culture and natural assets. Cultivating entrepreneurship, including strengthening the entrepreneurial ecosystem and development of entrepreneurship education. Developing of a business incubator program. Enhancing access to the use of broadband services to support job growth through business creation and expansion. So you can see that we, that those are the criteria from the grant. Now, our project, what we're looking at is to build an innovation and knowledge-based business center. Roughly a twenty-seven thousand square foot, three-story facility with our hope being downtown Buchanan. We feel that there's no better place to build such a facility than Buchanan and on Main Street. We have the opportunity to do that. We are actually fortunate in this scenario to have an available lot for such a building. What this building would do is that we would take the efforts that we have from an entrepreneurial standpoint. About twelve months ago, we hired a small business coach through the West Virginia Small Business Development Center. In the past twelve months, that small business coach, we said there was a need for that service. That small business coach has helped in the region open eighteen businesses, started eighteen new businesses, helped businesses, existing and new, access one-point-five million dollars in capital, so it's loans or equity, created forty-four new jobs out of that position. To give you an idea, locally, they worked with Fishhawk Acres to bring them to Main Street. Saying Your Name was a client of theirs, and they worked to get them open on Spring Street and then also on Main Street. They're currently working with the Daily Grind, new owners of that, to get that open and access to capital. They worked with M2 Bravo, which is a company in the old armory, which if you have teenagers, they probably love that place, from what I've heard. They also worked with Hoover Farm Equipment out on the corridor, which was L and T Tractor. And so very, very critical in helping them all get access to capital and making their dreams become a reality. So you can see that there's a huge, not only need, but there's a huge impact from what we've done already. And so what we want to do is we want to take that to the next level. We want to incorporate what we're doing at West Virginia Wesleyan, partnering with the college and developing an entrepreneurial course. And we did that in the fall, and we are currently in the process of having a class right now in the spring. We had twenty-five students enrolled in the fall, and we had eighteen students enrolled in the spring. We're going to have another course in the fall of 2016 as well, so we're going to keep that momentum going. And then what we'll do with this facility is that twenty-five percent of this facility we dedicated to resource partners such as West Virginia Small Business Development Center, the Economic Development Authority. And we'll include, and we'll start to bring in things like the Launch Lab model that WVU has perfected, which is basically a commercialization unit that helps entrepreneurship. has perfected, which is basically a commercialization unit that helps entrepreneurs take an idea and get them access to legal assistance, get them access to a maker lab. We'll have a maker lab in this facility that, you know, you can make a prototype, you can design it, 3D printing capabilities. We'll have the ability to have coding classes, which is huge, because that is, I mean, that's the technology that we're dealing with today. If we can have those opportunities here, that could really help to transition some things into some businesses. We'll also incorporate a concept that was developed out of Beckley called the Hive. It's a co-working space. There will be multiple locations of Hive Network co-working office spaces around the state. And what that means is that if somebody has a membership to the Hive, they can have a desk or a place to work if they're in Buchanan, or if they're in Lewisburg, or if they're in Beckley. And we create this one over, one common system that people can be attracted to. The big key about this whole project, this collaboration, bringing as many resources that we have in the state that foster and cultivate and promote entrepreneurship and assist entrepreneurs taking their ideas to the next level to become businesses. If entrepreneurs, whether it be student-based from the college level, the high school level, or non-students, anyone from, you know, that has an idea or a concept, if they can find the resources here to make their dreams a reality, take their idea and their business and build it into a revenue-generating business, and they have that here in Buchanan, there's a higher chance that they won't have to leave to find those resources. Because right now, in order to find a lot of those resources, they have to leave. But we're working to, we want to hope and try and eliminate that. To give you an idea of, there's been a decline over the past 15, 20 years in new startups, new businesses. And so we really need to encourage new business creation and new business startup in order to start to make the movement in the opposite direction for growth, because we've had that decline for so long, and we knew, we need new ideas, we need new creation, we need new businesses. There is a poll that was done, and it was done across the world, across the globe, across socioeconomic statuses, race, gender, didn't matter. They found that five in 1,000, they found the profile of an entrepreneur, successful entrepreneur like Steve Jobs. And they did that profile on 1,000 people, and they said five people out of that 1,000 have the same characteristics as a Steve Jobs. Same creativity, same drive, same emotion, passion as Steve Jobs. So that means that for every 1,000, even, we look at Wesleyan, they have, how many do you guys have, 1,400?
15.
1,500? Sorry, I didn't know. 1,500. So, you know, there's five Steve Jobs over there, or seven and a half. I don't know where we find the half one, though. You know, you've got the high school here, you know, we've got 1,000 students, there's five Gene Steve Jobs there. Let's get them exposed. Let's figure out, you know, life and success is all based on how many experiences you can have and how much your exposure you can gain. Now, the other thing, real cool thing, you know, 500,000, okay, it's low, but 20 out of 1,000 have the capabilities and characteristics to create a $50 million a year business. So let's think about, if we put these resources in place, and we start to create this, and we start to find, you know, the 5 out of 1,000, the 20 out of 1,000, and what happens when we create a $50 million a year business here in downtown Buchanan? What if we happen if we create five, six? We think about how much that can change our economy and diversify it. And that's the big thing, is diversifying our economy. So the next portion of the project, of this building, is 75% of this space will be utilized for lease space, office space. What we, what we lack in Upstate County, and in Buchanan alone, and in the region, really, is Class A-type office space, modern office space with fiber broadband, backup power, and the amenities that businesses need today in order to be successful. So it makes it very tough to recruit knowledge-based businesses into this area. And knowledge-based businesses are most likely to hire college graduates. We graduate, we rank really low on college graduation rate, and that's, doesn't, you know, that's not bad or good. College isn't it for everybody. But what we do have a problem with is we educate quite a few students in West Virginia, and we graduate quite a few students in West Virginia, about 6,500 a year statewide. We're within a 90-minute drive of about 50,000 enrolled students in institutions of higher learning. Four out of five college graduates in West Virginia leave within five years of graduating. And there's a disconnect there, because the skill sets that they're learning and graduating with, we don't have the opportunities that match those skill sets. And so a lot of students that graduate don't want to leave, but they have to. I ended up having to leave a couple of times, and I clawed my way back. And, you know, it's tough. It is tough. And so what we have to figure out is how do we create those opportunities that are matched to the skill sets of college graduates, whether they were born in West Virginia or came to West Virginia, and want to stay in West Virginia? How do we fix, how do we fix that? Well, let's, let's put down a foundational system of Class A-type office space building that can house these businesses, that they can be successful, they can have what they need in order to be successful, and they can pull from a potential labor force within a 90-minute drive, they could have, you know, 4,000 graduates every year for entry-level positions, and create that kind of an ecosystem. Build it up, fill the space, and then continue to hopefully entice private development to build more office space, to build more space. And who knows? We're talking about office space, but when we talk about entrepreneurs, it could be anything. It's limited to the amount of creativity an individual can have. So maybe that's where some manufacturing comes from it. Maybe they create a product, and it's commercially viable, and it turns into, they need some manufacturing, so they build a manufacturing plant. There's, the opportunities are limitless of what could happen. So, I mean, that gives you an overview of kind of what we're doing. And to give you that, you know, we're working with WVU, West Virginia Wesleyan College, New River Gorge Regional Development Authority in the Hive, Region 7, TechConnect West Virginia, Enova. I mean, we've got so many people pulled together to bring this to fruition, that we're really working across a lot of different platforms. So why am I here telling you guys this? Other than it's good news and it's exciting, right? And we're, you know, our pre-application is in, we're waiting on a response, and hopefully we get the green light to move forward. Well, since we want to build it in the city, we need to partner with the city, and we need to develop partnership. Michael Doss, which I am truly sad, I truly am, I really am. We work together on a lot of different things, and we've got a couple of projects in the hopper that are, again, you know, we can't talk about everything, but they're pretty impressive. And I think that they'll come to fruition, and it's sad that Michael won't be here to share in that. But Scott, the city attorney, we had a couple of meetings to talk about how we can facilitate the property on Spring and Main Street. How can we facilitate a structure where partnership, where the development authority can build a building on there, obviously, if you guys so choose? And what we're looking at is I would ask the city council for an agreement or resolution of commitment to transfer the property at the corner of Spring and Main to the development authority, contingent upon, only, only, contingent upon, if we are awarded funding. We want to make sure that we go after this grant and we're responsible in how we spend money and invest in this grant. We feel very confident in this grant, but it is a federal grant, and anything can happen. So we don't want to get into transferring the property and having the money to write the deed and get into all that. I talked with the grant individuals this morning, and they were more than happy to hear that if we had a commitment, that that would suffice to get the funds awarded, and then our draw of funds would be contingent upon proof of the deed. We're expecting to create about 120 jobs, knowledge-based type jobs out of this. The first floor of the, of the facility will be street level, and it'll be retail opportunities. That way, we're maintaining continuity with the downtown district. Also, we're very sensitive and feel that it's a priority to make sure that whatever building we build has the historic considerations and presence in design that matches the same facade of currently, what is currently downtown. I think that it's been, we haven't built a building in downtown Buchanan, I think, since, in 50 years, or maybe more. This is an opportunity to have something added to Buchanan, to have that, that core piece of property, to put something there, something that can provide jobs, produce jobs, and increase, you know, not only the financial value of downtown, but also the cultural value of downtown. I can show you a couple of different renderings that we've had done. And the other point I want to make is that when we look to build this building, we look to try and replace some of the parking in that lot that we take out. So there's an opportunity to have parking below the first floor, and we think we can fit it into our budget. And that way, we're really not displacing too many lots, and if we bring more people in from a business standpoint, they'll have some places to park. And I think we can get 20 spaces underneath the building, 18 or 20. So that's, that's unique. If you guys have any questions, please fire away.
Okay, one more question. How does the, the fact that that was an old service station lot, and how does the storage tanks that were removed, but also we have to keep doing the testing on the earth there, how does that come into effect with this?
Excellent question. Knew that would come up. We've had a couple of conversations, and it was one of the first things we did when this grant opened up and we started working through the application. There were some environmental questions about the property. And reached out to Mr. Patrick Kirby at WVU Brownfields, and we talked about, you know, what is, what do we do with the property, basically? What do we do with the property? And he did some research, contacted DEP, found the reports that were done on it. One was done in 2006, and there was material found, and there were some underground storage tanks that had been removed, and then there were some monitoring wells. And the DEP had stuff, for lack of a better term, sucked out in 2010, 2011. And then we had another conference call with Patrick Kirby and then Patricia from DEP to discuss, you know, what are the possible remediation things that we'd have to do there? And one of the suggestions that they had, after looking at all the paperwork and reports, they said, you know, the length of time that it has been since that is if you don't dig down, you're most likely looking at putting in a vapor barrier, and then obviously, when they engineer the property, looking at runoff, but there'd be, we wouldn't use groundwater, but they'd most likely just be a vapor barrier. Yes?
I have a question. This is the first I've heard of this. So you're basically wanting the city to give you that lot free? I mean, you're not wanting to buy it, you just wanted to give it to you. Is that correct?
Well, what I'm, what I'm looking for, and it's not I, with the development authority...
Well, I know that you said it.
Yeah, I'm the messenger, right?
Right.
What the development authority is looking for is a partnership. I think the land is valued at 120,000. What we're saying is, we're going to be partners in this deal, we'll both bring to the table, one, the city brings to the table the property with $120,000 value. The development authority brings to the table a $4 million building and the possibility of 120 jobs coming down to downtown Buchanan. And I think when we look at it, it's not, yes, you are giving it to me, or giving it to the development authority at no cost, but you're only doing that because the development authority's willing to go out and take a million-dollar loan to get $3 million in grant to build this building and improve the downtown area. So it's, I would look at it as we're going to use this value and take 120,000, we're going to get $4 million in return, plus some other jobs, and maybe some more people to the area. Does that sound, I guess, a little bit better?
She's going to take a little bit of time to digest that.
Well, wait a minute. Let's let him finish his presentation, and we're going to have questions, I know, and this is the first time, most of you are hearing this. Mr. Thomas has heard it from the development authority since he sits on it, and I sit on the executive, so I've heard of it, particularly the grant, which is an opportunity for us. But let, let Mr. Hitten finish, and then we can ask any questions.
I just had the question here.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, you're fine. And I understand, and that's, that's why I made the comment that...
It's a whirlwind, it's fast-moving.
Yeah, it came up quick. When we first started looking at this idea, it's been a while, I mean, but it's been an idea. And we really didn't have a sure shot at going after traditional funding from public works. The POWER came through, and I got a phone call and said, you should, you should apply with what your project, you're trying to get through public works, which probably won't get funded, you should probably go through POWER. And I didn't even think that POWER is going to be an option for us. And so since then, I've wanted to come to council and talk about this. But I also, I made a trip, I had a trip scheduled for DC to go out and talk to ARC and EDA about this project to make sure that they, you know, kind of get a face with the project, and they're waiting for it. And timing has just not worked out, and I, and I don't mean, I didn't mean to kind of come off quickly. It's just, we're, we're up against a tight constraint, and we put in last week, we'll have 30 days, they'll have 30 days to review our pre-application, and then they'll ask us to submit a full application, and we'll have to have that in within 30 days.
But Rob, you've conceptualized this for much longer than 30 or 60.
Right. But there was just no, there was no funding opportunity in place, so it was a hallucination at times.
I have a question. One more. To finish a question you were working on before Rob asked her question. If you go down with parking garage, and how does that affect what the DEP says with those, with the soil tests and everything?
What will happen is we'll have to do a Phase 1, and Upstate County Development Authority will take on that cost as part of the project. And that's the other thing. The only, the only part that the city, that we're asking and requesting from the city is, is just to transfer the property. We'll cover all the other costs to develop the property. So we'll have a Phase 1 done on the property, and that'll give us an idea of what we need to do. If we dig down, then most likely, we'll have to find a place for the dirt to air out, and we air out for a period of years, and they'll test it again, and then it'll be fine. But from what I was told through the DEP is that it's been quite a while, and what was pulled out of there, it was petroleum product, but it was a gas station there, so there's petroleum product in a lot of, in a lot of the ground that you have around. I mean, if you have an alleyway that's gravel, you're probably going to find petroleum products there.
Thank you.
When you applied for this, did you not have to have a definite piece of property that you were going to be able to put that on?
No. It was because it was a pre-application. It was, in that regard, it was a concept.
Okay. So what's your backup plan if we don't agree to that?
Well, I would say that if you don't agree with it, then, and we would have gotten funded, then the city stands in the way of new development downtown and creating 100 jobs.
Is there not any other area in town that you could use?
Not really. I mean, not that it's ideal. I mean, here's the thing, we could, you know, this has happened really fast, we could do this, we could probably find land outside the city. I think it's important this is in the city. And I think that in order to make this project successful, the best way to do it is to keep costs as low as possible and partner and leverage off the assets and the resources that we have. If we have to go out and buy a property, project doesn't work. Just doesn't. If we partner with you, the project has more effort and more opportunity to work. And I think that's where the strength comes in. And I, and I hope that, I hope that the council will look past the quickness of everything and not feel off-guard, but take this as an opportunity to really add some, something to downtown Buchanan that would be extremely impactful. If this, I mean, if this happens, we're looking at future development that this could catalyze that would be, I mean, it's hard to even envision and comprehend.
Well, my concern is if we give you that property, we're already, right now, giving the development 40, $40,000 a year.
So we can do projects like this, yes. Right. You're facilitating and helping facilitate us and the work that we're doing in order to get this done. And the other thing is that, in giving that, probably, we're only transferring that property if we're awarded funding. And us getting awarded funding, we also have to go out and take a huge risk... And us getting awarded funding, we also have to go out and take a huge risk. We have to go out and take a $1 million loan, and that's a huge risk. But what the Development Authority, our charge is to create new jobs, create new businesses, find new opportunities that will 20, 30 years down the road, keep Buchanan, Upsher County, alive from an economic standpoint. And that's what we're charged to do. With this project, it does just that. This could leverage into other future development, and we're willing to take that risk, because if we're the first buffalo in the water, okay, and we prove that there's no gators out there, and maybe we can prove to other private individuals to develop some property commercially and keep the momentum going. Because what the reality is, is that we aren't going to get somebody else to do a spec building. And that's why we take the grant that we're looking at getting, this gives us the opportunity to take the risk and build a spec building, to a degree. I mean, we have some commitments already for this, for this property, which is the reason why we want to continue to move forward. But we really, we need the city. And I guess you could look at it in a way that, you know, we give the Development Authority $40,000 a year, and now we're going to give them a property. I don't know if that's the way I'd look at it.
Well, I'm not doing shit here. I just have a lot of questions that's going through my mind because it's happening so fast. But, you know, I could see that building being empty down the road also, like a lot of the other buildings that have second and third stories to them. And they're trying to make apartments out of them now. Is that what this is going, end up doing in the end, have businesses downstairs and apartments upstairs?
No.
You know? It seems to me like it could end up being apartments and have underground parking for the tenants upstairs that's living there.
No. The way that ED, the federal EDA is, you know, they're like the strict prison warden in the movie or something. They are, they are by-the-box strict. When we, if we're awarded funds from federal EDA, we have to do what we say, and we have to do that for 30 years. They approve all of our leases. And if we did something like that, one, it would be against the mission of what we're charged to do, but we would have to pay back all of the money right then and there. And it just doesn't make sense. I'm confident, beyond confident, that with everything that Buchanan has to offer, recruiting knowledge-based businesses to this area is not going to be a problem. I'll give you an idea, an example of a business that this kind of sparked. When I was a business coach, before I took this job, I covered the region, and I was in Thomas, West Virginia, and there was a business, and it was called GovCon Accountants. They were out of the Tyler's, Tyson's Corner, okay? They started in Tyson's Corner. Mark Vino started the company after he did a stamp with government contracting on the government side. He said, you know what? Businesses don't have the records that they need to have when they're going after government contracts, or when they get a government contract, when they're reporting. So he did, he said, I see an opportunity here, I'll create a business. And he did that, but he did it in Tyson's Corner. Let's face it, Northern Virginia, high rent district, not only for living, but also for doing business. He had a home in Canadian Valley, and he said, I want to do, I want to open an office here. And I worked with him as a business coach. And he said, you know how much more profitable I can be? And I can pay people, you know, $65,000, $70,000 a year to do the work that he's paying somebody $110,000, $120,000 a year in Northern Virginia, and his rent's lower, and the quality of life is better, and there's no hectic traffic jams, and your stress is a little bit lower. And, you know, there's all kinds of positives there. And so it sparked something, and it's, you know, and there's other businesses, they're looking for those opportunities. But the thing is, is that they need the infrastructure, they need the type of space that they will flourish in and be successful. I am not doubtful in any way that this building will be empty in any way, shape, or form. If anything, we're going to end up having a list of people that we're going to need to build another building for.
Counsel, I'm going to ask you then to, this is all news to you, and it's going to take a little while to seek in. What I'm going to ask you to do is allow Mr. Hinton to finish his presentation, show us the plans. We do have a really long agenda still before us. Mr. Hinton, being on their timeline, asked to be on our agenda to take a look at this so we can discuss it. We have it under a property, under executive session, that is, we're going to be, so anybody can figure it out already, that's the discussion's going to be about. And you can ask your one question there, since I've allowed the rest, but please make it...
I'll make it very, it's applied to this. You know, I'm reviewing with the Planning Commission, the Buchanan 20 Plan, and it is right here in it. "We treasure our youth and are devoted to providing them quality schools, a safe environment, and a nurturing place to grow up, and employment opportunities for their future." Now, that's how I see this, is an opportunity for some of these kids that can't go to college. Okay, maybe they can learn, or maybe they've got great ideas and build something, maybe they make it rich.
Well, take genius, take IQ and throw it out the window.
Look at Sam Ludlow!
Take IQ and throw it out the window. Genius has a whole different, whole different scope. Genius is not measured by IQ, and creativity is genius. And genius is creating businesses, regardless of IQ. And I think that if we have those resources here, we could really do that. So just to give you an idea, this was some preliminary renderings that we did, gives you an idea of what the, what the office building would look like from that standpoint. Now, this was done before we added a third story. We were actually only going to go after $3 million, a total project, and then we learned about how, what percentage of mash we were going to need, and we could go up to four, which means we can add another floor. But it gives you kind of an idea of the historic facade-type frontage of there, and then obviously, you know, your storefront-type activity and look on that aspect. And this is just another drawing. And then I'll show you this one, but this is the car we can afford, and this is the one that's fully laid out with leather and powered windows and power seats and everything. Now, this is a little bit more expensive, but I'll just pass it around, but we could probably take some of this concept, and that was done by another architect firm. But it just gives you an idea of what that building could look like in that, in that area, on that corner. And the impact could be tremendous. And I, and I hope that the investment that you guys make, and we appreciate the investment that you guys make in the Development Authority on an annual basis. We hope that you feel that your investment is well-spent, and that we're really looking at the city in the best interest of the city. And I think that this project really exemplifies how we're focused on, you know, what can we do with the city of Buchanan, and how can we improve upon what is already really great.
Bob, as far as timeline goes, what is the last date that you can have this submitted? You're with an agreement for sure already. What is your timeline?
Well, if we have 30 days from submission, we probably could here. I had conversations with EDA yesterday and this morning, so that was a good sign. Means we're not tossed in the trash, means they're reading it. Probably May, sometime by the 15th of May, the 15th of May, we could have a notice of request to proposal.
Okay.
It could be sooner. I would, I would like to, because, I don't know, you don't know what's going to happen. If we could get this done before the election, I think that would be, it would help.
Can you help us say it?
Yeah, you can pass it around.
Could Bob scan a comment, too?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's... He got it off. Mr. Hinton.
Fantastic, Upsher County Development Authority.
Absolutely.
Well, what I think is, is this is a really unique opportunity that's on a really tight time clock, and that's just the nature of the grant program that came about for us. And we could sit around and say, we're not going to do it? The truth of the matter is, we don't tackle this. This opportunity is not coming back. So we either go with it and grab it, and take a little risk, and take a leap, it's a leap of faith, but we know that. The Development Authority Board knows this is a leap of faith. We have all the confidence in the world that he can build that facility, and that we can create opportunities for the next, for our kids, for college students, high school students, and all walks of life. This is not just a business model, this could be science kids, this could be unlimited opportunity. It's a, but we are fully behind it. And we think that it's the most exciting opportunity that Buchanan could, I mean, this is great for our future. And we would really stick out in north central West Virginia with something like this coming to fruition.
And there may be others to come?
And I will compliment the city, and all the things that you've done with the sidewalks and the infrastructure, you make it easy for us to attract this type of business with a facility, a mansion.
Over the four years that I've been on council, Bob, I've not seen an opportunity like this come before us. And it's one of the things that, that as public servants, that we would like to see come every year or something like that. I think this is an opportunity that absolutely put a leap of faith in, and we can't afford not to do. It's my personal viewpoint, and of course, we'll see what happens with the rest of the council later, but this is a fantastic opportunity for employment and for growth for the city of Buchanan.
Since I've heard about it since the beginning, the concept of the idea, I've always been 100% behind. I'm very uncomfortable with this timing, though, and the speed by which we're trying to do, and I've expressed that to you as well. Now that we have the council, though, all in discussion with it, what I'd like to ask you, Rob, and Bob, if you're, Mr. Hinton, Mr. Skinner, if you guys would be available to have a meeting with us, let's say, next week, if we could pull ourselves together to discuss further, and I would encourage it to be an open meeting for citizens as well, to be able to find out a little bit more of how this process works. We have a lot of discussion to do on this, particularly with our city attorney. We've also had questions on whether this would go through the Building Commission, if this would go through from the city. So we have a lot of work to do if we want to meet the timeline that they're discussing on this. We're not looking at making any decisions right now, so I'm going to think about it, it's an opportunity. But I think if you would be available, I know your work schedule, but if we could work out a time with council and perhaps anybody we can find who ever wants to be here, to discuss a little bit more and ask more questions, if that's, would you be available?
Yeah, absolutely.
Counsel, are you agreeable with that?
Yes.
All right.
We thank you guys.
No, thank you very much for the work that you do and the leadership to leading us downtown. Thank you so much.
Thanks, you're welcome.
I would encourage council as well, if you have any questions, you want to speak to either one of them, give Rob, Mr. Hinton, a call, he would be happy. And Mr. Thomas as well, is knowledgeable of the discussions before, not so much about this new. All right. And we're still under recognized, yes, and I apologize, folks, but this is the way it happens at this time of the year. We have Ms. Christine Bennett, and it's a call for action regarding the addiction education. Christine, as you know, is very much an advocate for a lot of the drug issues that we've been going, we have right now within our community, and I appreciate her coming forward and bringing us into some information. So thank you, Christine, you have the floor.
After that, my request is a breeze. I'm here tonight on behalf of my community group that several of us started, the Impact of Hope, which stands for Haven of Outreach Prevention and Education. A lot of you guys heard Senator Manchin and Senator Capto and the governor are all very involved in trying to get us funding and more money and address some of the substance abuse issues that we have in West Virginia. I'm going to give you a few statistics, and then I'm going to tell you what I'm asking for. A youth becomes involved in the juvenile justice system when he or she is either arrested by law enforcement or referred to the court through a petition filed. This is called a status offense. Status offenses are acts that would not otherwise be a crime if they were committed by adults instead of...
Excuse me, Christine, can you speak up a little bit, because people back here can't hear you?
Sure. I'll stand this way, too, maybe that'll help a little bit. Status offenses are acts that would otherwise not be considered a crime if they were committed by an adult. Truancy, underage drinking, use of tobacco products, or running away from home. So at this point, a juvenile is picked up, either delinquency, arrested by law enforcement or a petition. Three things generally occur. First, the petition can be moved through court, and the youth can be found responsible or adjudicated. Second, which is the most common here in Upsher County, youth receives an informal diversion process or an improvement period. Or third, it can be dismissed and no action taken. During the second, which is most common here in Upsher County, is where they are placed on what I call structured probation. They actually go through the same rules that an adult would if they were on probation. If they violate one of those rules, immediate confinement can happen. So let me give you an example. Board of Education has a zero tolerance policy on fighting any kind of violence. A child, juvenile at high school, gets into an altercation, as minor as it may be, that individual immediately goes on structured probation. While on this improvement period, which is supposed to be a diversion to try to keep them out of the court system and show them what it would be like if they were an adult and on probation, they have to submit to drug testing and curfews and other, a list of rules. It's now, when they have to submit to drug testing, when we create the huge issue in West Virginia. On any given day in West Virginia, approximately 7,000 youths are under some sort of court-ordered diversion program. West Virginia saw the largest percentage increase in youth confinements of any state in the country between 1997 to 2011. This information is, has been released recently, the governor tasked an intergovernmental task force on juvenile justice, these are their findings, I can get you guys any of the background information or links that you want. The annual West Virginia juvenile probation reports demonstrate that during that probation diversion, controlled substance violations are the third-largest category in West Virginia. Who are you? Between 2002 and 2012, the number of referrals for status offenses, again, this is an offense that would not really be a crime if they were an adult, increased by 124% in West Virginia. The number of those juveniles who were then placed out of home rose 255%. So here's what happens, and I can give you an example because it happened to my family. Fight at school, structured probation, positive drug test, immediately, that day, your rights are taken away from you as a parent, your child goes into state custody because that's the only way they have the authority to move them then through the rest of the system. There are no beds available immediately in any rehab facilities that we have in West Virginia. So because you now have lost your rights as a parent, your child gets sent to a shelter. So the closest shelter here, and the one that we ended up going through, was Morgantown. You can have no contact with your child while they are in the shelter, and they wait at the shelter until a bed opens up at some point in the future. So now, a fight at school has now escalated to court state custody of your child, your child is now in a shelter, and then will go to a juvenile rehab facility. That system...
Christine, is that if they test positively to the drug, do you have to have that?
One of the violations of the structured probation, one of the rules, is no substance abuse. They are required to submit to random drug testing at Serena or one of the probation officer's requests. They have to report weekly, and at any time, they can be asked to drug test.
But they're not taken from the home till they...
When they violate one of the rules of probation, the structured diversion, at that point, the MDT team, Serena, and the courts have... point, the MDT team, Serena and the courts have the option to then, because it's a drug problem, a drug situation, they then can put them through easier through the rehab process, which is what needs to happen. But as a parent who may not even know that their child is using at this point, you have now gone from my kid had a fight at school to I don't have custody, they're in a shelter and I don't know where they're going next because you have no say at that point. Judge Cato actually gave us, we showed up that morning for Serena to give the results of his weekly probation period and Judge Cato gave them an hour to find a bed, if they couldn't find a bed, three hours to put him into a shelter. So, that, we had a three hour window and as a parent, you have no control, no say and you have no idea what's going on. I have been in, my dad was in law enforcement, I have grown up in the system my whole entire life. That doesn't help when you're standing there and completely helpless and nobody, we have no resources here in the city that can explain what is happening to you and your child, what it can explain what comes next or if you even have any. That process of what I just explained cost the state $100,000 per bed per year per child. In Upsher County, the last time I had a conversation with Rodney and Serena and Matt may be able to know the figures current, we had over 400 kids in Upsher County on structured probation, rotating in and out of facilities.
400.
Over 400. The last time that I had the number conversation with Rodney, we had three probation officers, they each had 150 was their max caseload for juvenile cases.
What age groups is this all about?
Under 18, middle school to high school. So, that's $100,000 and the findings of these out of home placements which go through DHDR has increased 11%. The typical timeframe you're looking at is 15 months. So, $100,000, $150,000 for a year and a half per bed per child, 450 in Upsher County alone. That's the kind of cost that we're spending to be reactive instead of proactive. The West Virginia Task Force on Juvenile Justice announced that research shows that these out of home confinements only increase recidivism because you have very limited contact with family. My stepson actually had more access, while he was in the shelter, he was court ordered to go to Morgantown High, he was at the Morgantown Shelter by the hospital. He had more access to drugs than he ever would have had here while he was in the shelter. And then he was placed at Yor, a facility in Fairmont, is where he did, he did 10 months Which just makes them, when he came home, a lot of people who go through addiction don't make it the first time through recovery. I mean, that's just a known fact that we have. When they come back to this community and they're in the same triggers, they're in the same family situation, they're in the same friend groups, peer groups, it makes it very tough for them to stay in recovery. The stigma in this community is staggering when it comes to someone who is trying to maintain their recovery. My stepson, he went through the program, he did really well, he thought he had everything under control, he wanted to come back, he wanted to be a leader, he wanted to tell other kids they didn't have to make these same choices. He did great while he was there, caught up with school, he got out, we enrolled him back in school. One of the counselors said, what kind of extracurricular activities do you want to do, we got to sign you up because of the court probation? He chose to be involved with one of the substance abuse programs at the high school. That's what they do, they draw pictures and create art, which he's fond of, they go out and they talk to other kids and this is why you shouldn't choose to do drugs. But because he had already chosen to do drugs, even though he was now in recovery and wanting to make a difference, the first day of that class, the teacher called him into the hallway and said, I handpicked my students and I just don't think you're going to work out well for this class.
Whoa.
Now, of course, you know, the principal got involved and we got a real nice apology from the Board of Education and, but that was all it took for him. We have now been through the court system, through the revolving door for the last four years. That's a problem that we need to start being proactive about controlling the stigma, which is why one of the things that, I'm sure you guys remember me being here against the meth book that tried to get passed. We don't need the stigma. It's hard enough for people to choose recovery and to maintain recovery without battling stigma. This task force also recommended in their findings that the state and local agencies should implement policies, practices and programs to achieve the goals of increasing data collection, information sharing to ensure that taxpayer dollars are used in the most efficient ways for that particular community. They also encouraged that we need to create community system resources that target the right youth at the right time. Anyone who has been involved in any kind of a family addiction knows that you have a window of probably 20 to 40 minutes, maybe a day, when that user is willing to get help. If you miss that window, you have to wait till the next window, it could be weeks, months. So, in order to have something in place that could facilitate that person at the moment that they need it, is something that we need to look towards doing. West Virginia also leads the nation in overdose death rates due to substance abuse and that grew by over 560% since 2000. We lead the country in a lot of things. I think it's time we start leading them in a proactive thing. We have a lot of small resources in this community and they do a lot of great things. But we don't have a liaison, we don't have the collaboration or a community hub to where we can get that knowledge of all of the little groups and give it to that parent who needs it in that minute. They don't have the time, they don't have the frame of mind to go out and search through hours of data and talk to multiple people to see if, you know, the 20 community groups that we may have access to around here. So, that's what I'm asking this council to do, is to create an advisory group, an advisory committee. We had a committee for Christmas decorations, you know, I'm not asking for a tax line, I'm not asking for a budget line, not asking for any funding for the city. The only thing that I am asking is that the city create an advisory council and let us grow a collaboration from these groups, from law enforcement, from the groups that are already in place, from the medical facilities, so that they have a place that we can come together and especially recovering addicts. We have to listen to what they went through, what their mindset was, what worked, what didn't work, what their triggers were. We have all of the bookmarks that you could have, but if you're not listening to what the problem is, you're not solving the problem. And we have that problem here in Upsher County. We're not listening because we think we know more than the addict does, they're the ones with the problem. They're the only ones that can tell us how to fix the problem. We have to give them a platform. I would like to use that group to hopefully go to the county. I seem to have more luck when I come to the city and get them on board with something first and then they get to the county and they seem to want to get on board. I would like to have social platforms so that, you know, Matt can say, hey, this is what's trending right now and we can get it out there. Yes, we have the news media, we have personal social media accounts, but we don't have that community group, that one collaborative team that can take all of these pieces and put them together. That's what I think is important. Why involve the city? Why not do it myself? Why not take my group and be that liaison? There are millions of dollars in funding that is available to city and local governments, millions and millions, for recidivism, for specific purposes, for equipment and training for local first responders. Harrison County just got grant funding, they were able to provide through Rite Aid, any parent that wanted a drug test kit, free. Any parent that wanted Narcan, which we have a heroin problem in Upsher County, free, whether insurance paid for it or not. Those resources are only available through the city. Now, I have 10 years of grant writing experience, I'm not asking even to, for the city grant writer, city county grant writer to, you know, tie any of their time up to this, but if we can have a collaboration or share demographic information, that makes submitting those so much easier because that work's already been done. City and the county have already done the legwork for many of them. So, that's, that's why I'm coming here and asking the city to be involved, to take the first step and be proactive for once instead of reactive. The Development Authority gave a great presentation about, you know, our future and filling these up with kids and, and you know, all of the great things that they could do. If we don't get a control, if we don't get control of this substance problem, we're not going to have anybody to put in that building.
Well, and thank you Christine for your presentation and you bring up very valid points which are always being discussed through the Family Resource Network, through, there's quite a few organizations, Opportunity House, that do address a lot of your issues, but you're right, there isn't a central hub, so to speak, of information, resources and all of that. I would ask our city attorney, if we wanted to form a commission or we wanted to form, not a committee, because this is a much larger task than a committee.
Before he answers, one of the things I would like to see them do.
I'm not through asking the question from him though. To form a commission or a resolution, which would be the best way to go about, keeping in mind the time that we're in, in fact, I would almost want to push this off to, we're right in the middle of this transition perhaps time, so we can make a commitment, they may not follow a commitment. So, let me finish asking this question. Could we form a commission or would it be better to do a resolution as a commitment, as a, to help form a hub group with other organizations?
Can I make a suggestion before Scott?
Are you the attorney?
No, but I have a suggestion.
All right, go ahead.
You know, you've talked several times about having a town hall meeting in regard to this very topic and I think this would be an excellent topic to discuss. I don't have a problem with a commission or committee or resolution, but you know, we need to have the county involved, we need to have the school board involved.
Yes.
And Stalkard Youth is really one of our wonderful programs we have for the city and the county.
Right.
That may be the only auspices of that whole program to have this as a town hall meeting. I mean, we have so many, you know, I'm thinking of Mountain Cap, I was on the Mountain Cap board for years and they have the Child Advocacy Center. Barbara County doesn't have one yet, but they want to get one. This is a systemic issue that we're facing our youth of the country and I think you're right Christine, we do not have a hub or focus group to really deal with this. And we got to start at the elementary school level, quite frankly.
Absolutely.
You know, and I think Stalkard will be a great thing. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mayor, but I think it's a pervasive problem, we ought to have town hall, you know, more than one town hall meeting, but let's get the county and the school board immediately with us in this whole process.
Well, and I agree with you Dave and I think most of the citizens in Upsher County and Buchanan agree with you on this, this is not new news. It's how, as a municipality, is it with our tax dollars or is it with our voice or within our realm to make this happen? And what I hear you saying Christine, is you want a commitment from this city stating that that is the way, that the policy would be from now on as a part of what you feel would be a hub or a reference center. You want that commitment, that's why I'm asking my city attorney to make that commitment a formal commitment. So, I will ask you again, Mr. McLaure, what would be the best procedure to go with that?
I don't know if there's any difference between committee and commission, quite frankly.
Well, yes, I do, because we can put a commission, like the city planning commission, we can put that on.
By ordinance?
Yes, by ordinance.
I mean, it seems like to me, since it's original, that you would start with an ad hoc committee of council or interest of public people and then decide the direction to take from there. Frankly, so I think a committee and obviously anything that's reasonable or relevant, council can create an ad hoc committee of its members and/or citizens to compromise that committee, but I think you need to start there before you take it on to another level.
Well, we would, because in order to get the ordinance to do a commission, we would have to have how many people sit on it, how, who's coming from what area, I understand that. But for the most effective commitment from the city, that's what I'm asking. We can start off with a resolution stating this is what we would want to do, have it in writing, so that way it begins the ball rolling for the committee to start and then ultimately have a commission which would be almost permanent.
Right, this is a long process. I understand that, but we have to start.
Yes. All right, thank you Scott, I appreciate that, Mr. McLaure. Christine, I think we understand each other and I think the council understands what you're looking for. Let's explore how we can do that. I would encourage you to communicate with myself and any one of the council members that you would like and let's see how we would form that first committee to look at. And counsel, I would like you to also consider a resolution in this case that shows the commitment of the city to fight this epidemic, fight this issue. It would be the first time that the city has actually committed itself to doing that, so I would ask you to do that. Do you have any questions for Mrs.?
I just have a comment to her. Christine, I'm so aware of this and you know, I don't have any children in school, but I have a lot of friends and neighbors and whatnot who have children in schools, but I was contacted by someone else, looking for the city to do something.
Right.
Okay? And I said, okay, I'll find out. So, I called chief of police, talked to Doug, and then I called the county sheriff and talked to Dave Kaufman. And one of the things that I got out of Mr. Kaufman was that having students who've gone through this, who've been through it, to speak up, tell their story, tell their tale and put them in that environment because, you know, they can sit here and look at adults all day long, but if they, a role model, a role model.
Exactly.
And he said that later on, we'll try to do something like that. So, Mayor, I'll be glad to serve on a committee for, if it comes to that, I would love it.
Excellent. Sure.
Christine, I remember the scene at the high school where they had the bedroom.
Yep.
And 100 different items in the bedroom where kids could hide their stash.
Correct.
And it was places where I would never, ever have imagined that. That was a very enlightening display that I, did anybody here see that at the high school?
Well, I can't do it.
Yeah, but anyway, the, what gets me is that there were some addicts there and they gave their own personal testimony.
Yeah, Heather wanted to be here tonight, she was going to speak.
Heather did great and it touched my heart and, because that's a success story.
Yes.
That is a success story and we need more success stories and I'll be glad to help you too.
Well, and at the very minimum, because we do have many groups and they're all doing different things, but I would like the very minimum for this committee, commission, at whatever point in time that this develops, to be able to provide a letter to any family who starts into the system that says, Buchanan gets it and here are all of your support resources throughout the county that you can contact. We don't have, you literally have to go out by yourself and find someone to help you because we don't have that collaboration, that hub, and I think that's what we've got to start to focus on.
Any other question or comment for Christine? Christine, thank you so much for the work that you do. We know you're.
Thank you.
I think we can do something there, I think maybe it's about time the city and we can get with the county in one of our dual meetings and see where they could be of assistance, particularly at the judicial level. I think they may have a lot of input into that. All right, next on our list, we have the proclamation declaring to get out the vote. Proclamation, you have it in your packets. Mary, did you, you forwarded this from the American Legion, so did you want to read it or?
I have these in my office.
I'll read it if you want me to.
Well, I'll read it.
Well, I'll read it.
Or you read it.
All right, this is the 2016 Proclamation, Support Your Vote for Voter Registration and Voting Program. Whereas, the American Legion since its inception has promoted an active involvement by its members, posts and departments in the electoral process in the United States and whereas, numerous resolutions through the years have put the American Legion on record encouraging all eligible voters to vote on Election Day and whereas, Resolution 136, 1952 National Convention, Get Out the Vote, Establish an American Legion Voter Education and Participation Program by the Same Name. And whereas, our democratic republic is threatened by apathetic populace, choose not to participate in our country's electoral process and whereas, members in the American Legion who vote in numbers exceeding the national average have a unique opportunity to participate in the electoral process and to encourage others to do so as well. And whereas, the Get Out the Vote Program is nonpartisan and has for its purpose the encouragement of all eligible voters to register and participate in the elections. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Mayor of the City of Buchanan, the Frank B. Bartlett Post Number Seven of the American Legion, reiterates its longstanding commitment of service to the United States of America by recognizing and promoting the truest form of Americanism and personal responsibility to our government, the act of voting on Election Day and be it finally resolved. The American Legion Post Number Seven, through its Get Out the Vote Program, encourages members and members of our community to fully involve themselves in the electoral process by serving as poll workers, volunteers, by voting and by encouraging and assisting others to register and vote, signed by my name, Mayor Richard Edwards of the City of Buchanan.
You're here.
It's a very good thing with the.
Mary, thank you for bringing that to us again in the chair. You know what, ew, I hate to do it before I embark on my reports, but I would, you know what?
I'm going to call as I made dinner.
If any members of council have to go to the restroom, please do it one at a time. But I'm not going to interrupt our Department of Labor reports, they've already had a long day. I don't want to keep them hanging longer than we have to. So I'm going to continue this meeting. If a council member needs to go, one by one you may go and return as you come back. Mr. JB Kimball, Inter Fire Chief, please.
Good evening. I'll be brief. I have three things tonight. First of all, for any citizen or council member, mayor, anybody that would like to come down to the firehouse, the Public Safety Training Facility is finished. The Fire Department has had a couple of small training events there. We're just lacking some chairs right now. We have old metal chairs, we have new chairs ordered for the state's art. I want to thank the citizens, I want to thank council. I'm sure Matt will probably do the same thing, it's a beautiful facility. It's been a long time coming, but it will be well utilized. The second thing, council, we're in the process of civil service testing. We do have one opening in the Fire Department. So public, council, if you know anybody, applications are available. The deadline is May 6th. The physical agility test will be May 23rd is the practice, if anybody wants to come and practice the physical agility test. If a bit, you can come to the final one, which will be, I believe is May 27th. And then the review planning on civil service process, Mayor, you know, is a long one. Takes about three months to hire a fireman or a policeman, making sure that you get enough, by state code, to get enough people on the list. So anybody out there that would like to look at the professional firefighting, we are hiring and we are testing. Third thing, and we'll be quick, I have a gentleman here with me tonight, his name is Patrick Traxler. He is a West Virginia Wesleyan student and Patrick's kind of unique to a Wesleyan student. He's lived at the firehouse for three years and he has provided fire protection, just like a full-time firefighter, when he's not in class, he stays, sleeps, eats, everything at the firehouse works out. So I brought him in here tonight, you know, he's just like a, he's a volunteer fireman, but he's just one of the full-time guys because he's there fifteen hours a day probably. So he trains with us, he goes on probably seventy-five percent of the calls that we go on, so he gets a lot of experience. And he's here tonight briefly to discuss his experience and what it's done for him. And we've also started a communication line with West Virginia Wesleyan College. He graduates in December, so we're looking for a replacement for Patrick. And we're also asking the college for maybe an additional live-in person, somebody that's interesting in the fire service that could be from anywhere in the country. We will train them. If they have training, that's a positive note. Him coming from Pennsylvania, he had some of the basics, but he also had to, as you know, he had, coming from Pennsylvania, he had to do West Virginia training. Our standard is higher than Pennsylvania. So he's here tonight to briefly talk about his experience and what it's done for him. So.
Mayor, council, citizens of Buchanan, I'd like to first thank you for the opportunity of staying at the firehouse the past three years. I plan on continuing doing that until I graduate in December. But as he said, in Pennsylvania, live-in programs and fire departments are huge and I would like to see something maybe here with West Virginia Wesleyan College, the City of Buchanan, Upsher County, to be able to build something. This live-in program has gave me firsthand experience in engine rescue and truck company operations, which is very seldom done in fire departments. I don't know if many of you know that, but also it's given me a lot of training, it's taught me a lot of responsibility, it gave me the opportunity to meet a lot of dignitaries in the state government, the local government, and it's just been a great process throughout the whole entire thing. And I hope that we will have backing from the city and the county and that we can get West Virginia Wesleyan College on board and that we can continue to grow this program because as JB said, you're pretty much getting a free fireman, just with giving them room and board. So, you know, instead of two guys, NFPA standards, you have to have two guys in, two guys out. When you go inside of a structure, when we get on scene most nights, there's three of us because I'm staying there. So we wait for one volunteer. But now, if I wasn't staying there, you'd wait for more people. So it is a good program, if we can build it a little bit, it'll even help the city, the college. It's great publicity for everybody. So I hope that we can see that continue to grow and I just want to thank you all for the opportunity to allow me to do that.
Just one, is there a requirement on your testing?
On this, this department, yes, it's eighteen.
Okay, what about, is there a maximum age?
Thirty-five. You could have reached your thirty-sixth birthday.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for, for the inter?
I do, I have a couple.
You do?
I just want to say there again, it's all about what's in this.
The 2020 plan?
Yeah, talks about collaboration.
Absolutely. I want to congratulate you on the work that you're doing and as an interim chief over from Mitch's takeover, you're doing a fine job over there. You're protecting our citizens very well, the training that you've been putting on, particularly when it comes to our volunteer fire departments that you've been using and utilizing, fantastic work. That's exactly what we were looking for. We are now still in the process, today we had one of our last interviews for the fire chief, we'll be looking at that as well. Patrick, we cannot say, you know, the value that you bring, you are actually the temporary firefighter since we lost Mr. Cutright, but you are so invaluable and we'd love to keep you here in Buchanan, you know that. But we appreciate all that you do at Wesleyan as well and your graduation as well, congratulations on that. And I know that you work very heavily in the church, so keep up the great work. You're a fine example of exactly what a great firefighter and a great resource for the community is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And just a little plug, I do the Facebook page for the Buchanan Fire Department, if you want to keep up with us, check us out on Facebook, we try to keep up with it, so.
Real quick, Mayor, on your remark about me doing a good job, I'm surrounded with quality people. If it wasn't for them, my job would be very difficult. They make it very easy, so I want to kudos to them.
Thank you. All right. Chief Kimball, now we've got Chief Gregory, Police Department.
Good night, guys.
Good night.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I brought an addendum to my annual report.
You've got a lot of work to do, Matt, because.
Yeah, I see that. Police Department's been very busy, has a way to respond to emergency incidents, involved investigations, other activities. Just in the last week and a half, we were involved in less than three major drug arrests, whether it was a direct investigation begun by the Buchanan Police Department or indirectly through our assistance with another agency. We do continue to collaborate, obviously, with all of our law enforcement partners from sheriff's departments, state police and federal agencies as well. So this collaboration, this networking, as it has in the past and as it continues to do, yields a lot of fruitful results, as you've seen here in the last week and a half. We are in the process of training new VIPS members. We are gearing up for the Strawberry Festival and all of the activities that come along in the summertime. And very busy season for the Police Department and our volunteers, really no shortage of something to do for them. We are actively training four new members with the possibility of a fifth coming aboard. I had a young lady who visited with me today. She was a student of mine at the college and she was seeking further enrichment of her education, so I offered her an opportunity to serve with VIPS, which she was very eager to take part in. So we're looking at doubling our numbers, that will put us up to ten new VIPS members, which is substantial, as we go into this busy season. It's a tremendous help, as it has been in the past with the city Police Department as well as our citizens. We are actively training our new officer. We do have his, Mr. Barkis' paperwork submitted to the State Police Academy. We're well in advance of the deadline, which was the second week of May. So we're hoping that, well, with the paperwork getting in at such an early date, that we get him into the academy. If we do, if we're successful with that, we're looking at starting him during June thirteenth and he will go through the summer and graduate on September thirtieth. We are in the process of enrolling Officer Stewart in pro training. As you recall, Sergeant Stewart is our selection to serve as the pro officer in the Buchanan Academy School, beginning with the fall term with school there in August. And pro officers have to undergo mandatory training in the summer and we're looking at the week of July fourth in Wheeling. So we have registered him for that class. He does have to go through a couple of extra classes there from the outset because he is brand new to the program. And so we have to make those necessary arrangements and look forward to placing him into school. Speaking of the Academy School, we continue to partner with members of the Board of Education as well as Academy School officials, local emergency responders, police officers, fire, EMS, as well as the Office of Emergency Management. And for several months, we've been in discussions to plan emergency drills for the Academy School. We're seeing that come to fruition in a tabletop exercise that will be held at the Public Safety Complex in our new training room, as JB spoke of. We're very proud of that room and look forward to having many such exercises, trainings in the future. So this will be the first of many and will take place next week as we prepare for active shooter type drills, emergency response to our local elementary school and better make our, not only our officers, but all of our emergency responders more prepared and ready to deal with any type of emergency situation. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Chief. Question or comment for Chief? I'm so happy to hear Mr. Barkis is on his way and doing that. I know Sergeant Stewart is excited to move on to the pro, which after the, I know you already had a semi-drill for a round table discussion on it, an active shooter. I feel very confident, especially from the reports I got in your department and all the other departments on that situation. I think unfortunately nationwide, we've learned a lot, you see the examples of others, but I feel very confident, particularly in the academy, but in our middle school and our high school, that any situation like that is going to be perfectly handled. Thank you for that. Thank you guys for all the work we've learned this summer, probably the most active time of the year for you, so we'll need some tips that we usually get from you at that time.
I'd ask Matt, Matt, in regard to what Christine Bennett talked about, do you, how do you feel about what she's asking for?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, with the news that I report on the drug arrests, the arrests dealt with everything from pills to crack cocaine to meth, all here in our community. And I've reported several times in the past of the significance of the drug issues in our community. We do work diligently to attack these problems head on, that's why we work very closely with our law enforcement partners. But it is a very real problem in our community and is a very real problem for, that affects way down to our youth. We attended a training one time at the middle school during Red Ribbon Week and we did a little social experiment and just started to ask seventh and eighth grade students just different street lingo of drugs. And so not only did they understand street lingo of drugs, but they were able to tell us what quantities they're commonly packaged and how much they cost on the street, which blows my mind, this absolutely blows my mind. I have children at that age and so it's a very real problem in our community. And I think that, obviously, it's not just a law enforcement problem, this is something that you certainly can't arrest yourself out of and resolve it a hundred percent. But this is a, an issue that takes a collaboration from the community, from all aspects of the community. There needs to be a stand taken, as, you know, I've seen with other initiatives throughout the years with Rotary, we've had, actually our tip line grew out of these initiatives with Rotary. But to have a collaboration such as Christine is suggesting, I think is a major step forward in tackling the issues, you know, right here in our backyard.
You know, you had to have a successful underage drinking program, we used to have, I think you still do it. But isn't, wouldn't that be a good approach also with something like this, to get them, they have to require to do some things under?
Yeah, yeah, the basic program, we still, we still operate that, it's been in operation for around ten years now and we've got a lot of success with it. Seen a lot of alarming statistics, as you've seen in my annual reports, come out of this program, which again further solidifies the problem in our community. And the structure of the basic program itself is an excellent framework to build upon as we, as we progress forward and focus on not just alcohol related issues with our youth, but drug issues as well.
Man, I'm a teenager and I come to you and tell you I have a drug problem, I need some help, are you prepared to give me some help?
Yeah, I mean, I'm prepared to start pointing in the right direction. You know, there are a variety of resources in this community. I know that, I've talked to parents who have had children who have struggled with addiction and I know one of the number one costs is, or the number one concerns is the cost of treatment. That has really impeded a lot of, that's impeded a lot of people from getting the help that they need. And so there is avenues out there that, again, my involvement with other agencies, the court system, that is out there.
Yes, we will, we'll have a resolution for council to start looking at that and let's, I think it is time we take an active lead and let's pull all the parties together. We can help at least facilitate that and we do have the knowledge. So Chief, thank you so much, thank you for all of your, all of your officers and the work you do. Tim Smith, I understand is doing a great job as well?
Excellent job, yeah, we're very glad to have him, he's moved right in, this has been a very good transition, he's picked up and moved forward.
Is he dyed, hair or blonde?
Not, not quite yet. We'll talk to him about that, this thing may be red.
Thank you, Chief, we appreciate that. Tom Landis, Kelly Arnold, is it Kelly today, Water Department?
It's me. First of all, I'd like to thank the board, the Water Board and the council members and the mayor for coming up, having a board meeting at the Water Department, actually visiting some of the repairs and things that Tom has going on on the plant side and also looking at some of the meters that we're installing and seeing the different concepts that we're having to go through and the steps that we go through to install. One of our monthly reports, we had four different leaks during the month of March, two of which was caused by contractor. And I'm just throwing this out for an informational thing, if you call Ms. Utole, then it's emergency locate, hand dig till somebody comes and locates. locates, because if you get it, we're going to charge you. You have to give us time to get there to locate. And that's just for your information. We had two different boil waters. They was both in the same area where the contractor hit us. He hit us on Wednesday, and then he hit us exactly in the same spot on Sunday. And to me, that was negligence, and that's why, you know, it's, it cost a lot of men their Sunday in the rain, and, you know, because it's seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Same with land operators. They work through their holidays, and, I mean, it's just throwing a bone out to everybody that has to do it.
Did you charge the contractor for what happened?
Yes, I sent him two separate bills. He wanted me to bill the customer. I said, no, we don't have to do that. You're the one that hit it, so he'll have to work that out with him, so. And he did get billed over time. We did get the new pole set and switched over to a turner and booster. That's all taken care of now. I'm going to drop down now to some of the streets that completed on meters, which I try to report this to Mayor Tom, he reports this each month. Liberty Avenue, Weston Road, from Dr. Crest to Skyway Motors, Morton Avenue, Oklahoma Avenue, Stony Run Extension, Jackson Park Avenue, Manchester Drive, Zirkel Alley. Approximately 318 meters was installed, radio read meters were installed in March, but since then, there's been several more. We're up to around 1,500 meters that we've installed since November, which I can't, you know, compliment the crew enough with the regular work that they do and then continue to install the meters at the rate that they're going. As long as we don't have too many major problems or too many big projects this year, I can anticipate maybe getting them installed in this year, which Mike and I have discussed that we had looked at maybe as much as three years, get them installed. But it's, you know, they're having to cut the lid, and if they go into your service and it breaks on your side, they've got to repair that outside the barrel, too. So, I mean, that's the kind of stuff they're dealing, they're dealing with. It's not just, you know, simple. Some of the meters have to be dug out anyway, too. So roughly, at this present time, it's cut off about five days of the reading. It's usually 13 days reading meters each month with different cycles. And right now, we've anticipated around five days has been cut off. It could be a little more, a little less, but, which is real good, and Ambi's real tickled with the billing cycles, the way that it works out better. And I think in the long run, you'll see a lot more improvement, you know, as far as being accurate billing and not have to maybe go back out and go reread, because, like I said, if you go look in your meter barrel, which you see the different types of aspects that they try to read, if it's underwater, sometimes, I mean, anybody can misread a meter. And then they go back and they reread because the billing people, they catch, and says, this is a little higher than normal. So then somebody sent back out to reread it. But with this, hopefully, it takes a lot of that out, where you're not sending people back out to reread the meters. The next places we're going to attempt, which, Tenerton area is pretty well done, Shawnee Drive, that's north and south of 20, up through, we take in territory up past the high school. And all that is completed with radio reads, Stony Run and Brushy Fork, of course, I've mentioned before. We're going to be working in the Elkin Road area, Kenny's Trailer Port, and over the Vicksburg area. The skate assist, which has been being installed at the plant and on the distribution side. The tanks are complete, the booster stations are up and running. Tom's side, they're still working on a lot of the, his pumps and feeders, they haven't got it online yet, but most of the distribution is online. There's still some glitches in it, and they're still trying to work through that, but for the most part, it's, it's working pretty good. And then Tom also had an operator to receive his Class III Water Operator's License. He's now certified as a Class III Operator's License. He also started OIT in the plant. And he's attested to this before. The reason he started an OIT is because it takes so long for them to be able to operate the plant. I think we're looking, what, four years?
Four to six years.
Four to six years before they could legally operate the plant by themselves. And that's about all I have.
Okay, Kelly, any questions for Mr. Arnold or Mr. Landis? Tom, I, Tom, yes, Kelly, you wait. Tom, I know that when we got a chance to do the water department tour, and they had that one side out, or totally drained, and you guys got a chance to take a look at it, the concrete, we were really concerned with the concrete shore, because that is the weather side of the facility. Katie knows what I'm talking about, too. I serious, she knows. But we were very happy to say that it did not look like that concrete had any cracks all the way into the middle, into infrastructure wells, which was a big bonus that we weren't able to tell unless we drained out all of that water.
Right.
So, and that's where you're at now, filling in those cracks and, and working on the concrete?
They will be sandblasting and water pressuring the walls so they get a better feel of what's under the stains. And as it looks right now, you're correct, they're just going to go through the outside weather side wall, which is good news.
Yes. Kelly, you guys, your crews are really busting the humps on the radio read meters. But the other great thing about those meters is we can tell loss a lot faster if there's a leak somewhere through those radio meters.
Well, now, it's not a lot faster through them, but if somebody was to have a leak and, you know, they didn't understand when it was or something, which we haven't got that equipment in yet, because, and the reason we haven't is because whenever we get that equipment, then that's when the warranty starts. So we're trying to hold off on that equipment until we get pretty well, all the meters installed, then we'll get that equipment, which will keep up the 96 days of information in it. Like, if you have a commode that's running, say, through the night or something like that, it should give you a printout, which we bring it in, and Ambi and him can print it off, and it would show when you possibly had more usage in other, which will help the customer determine, you know, wasn't nobody home, so maybe they'll check my commodes or...
Excellent. Well, thank your crews for all the work that they do. I know they're very busy, and now we're getting the heat of the season, so it's going to be worth while.
And I thoroughly enjoyed our meeting over there and the tour.
Thank you, Tom. It was nice. All right, thank you very much. Mr. McClure from McClure Go, B L L C.
Yes, Scott McClure here. Couple items we're working on. The one item we have prepared, which I didn't make the agenda, but I thought it would, but it's council's request to reimburse the excess permit fees from the January 2016 to May 21st, 2016, period. Don't want to read the whole thing, just want to make sure everybody get a copy of this, but want to read the pertinent elements of it. Whereas council believes that all contractors and property owners were issued building permits should only be charged the amount contained in the fee schedule in proposed ordinance 2016-001, and that any amount over and above the fee rate calculated in accordance with the schedule should be reimbursed to the ultimate payer of the permit fee, now therefore be resolved by the council. There's the other whereas clause, but that's the essential one. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Buchanan, Upshur County, West Virginia, resolves as follows. The city administrator is directed to establish a list of the number of permits issued during the aforementioned time period and are subject to reimbursement. That's number one. Number two, further, the city administrator is directed to recalculate the building permit fees for the above referenced period in accordance with the fee schedule proposed in ordinance 2016-001, and remit any excess to the ultimate payer. Three, the city administrator is further directed to begin the process of contacting contractors and/or property owners in regard to their reimbursement and issue reimbursement checks for these amounts. So I think that, you all tell me if that covers the directive from the prior council meeting. It seems what you told me to do is apply this current rate to that period of time that the previous fee structure was in, in effect. And so that doesn't end till May, so we can have it on for a first and only reading, the first meeting in May, and still be timely, but I'll make sure everybody has a copy of this and either email or put it in everybody's box.
Well, before we can even do that resolution, of course, we have to, we have to pass it.
That'll be contingent upon passing.
You're taking the chicken before the egg.
That's great. Yeah, it'll be contingent upon passing. Ordinance 001 tonight, so those will have to go hand in hand. Also had an opportunity to work with Mr. Doss on the city fuel use policy, so we have a couple of changes to that. That will be considered for approval by the council this evening. Last thing, I have a copy of our franchise agreement renewal with Southern Link or Sequel Communications. Our office has reviewed this at length. We've also compared to various other franchise agreements, so after we kind of find two called it, I think we'll be in a position, hopefully, once I get back to Mr. Kellerman, to get something before council to digest and review and provide any other suggestions, any changes or whatever else. So we are moving on down the line on the franchise agreement. One more issue that we've got to check with, we approved the head and lease agreement. I think the payments are supposed to start June 1st, thank you, Mr. Doss, and we have not got a signed copy of that, so I'm going to call the Southern Link people and see where that document is and see where we go with that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Questions or comments for Scott? Counsel? Thank you, Scott. You're always, as always, efficiency stumbles me.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Under correspondence, counsel, in your package, you see sanitary sewer minutes regarding the sanitary sewer board recommendation of a 20% rate increase. We discussed that earlier, you had a presentation. Please do your research on that. Board of Education appointment of Tammy Jo Samples to Stuckler U Center. She's replacing Teresa Bellamy, who is moving, unfortunately. We're standing here for, leaving the Board of Education after so many years of leadership. But we get Tammy Jo Samples over at Stuckler U Center, which are doing a lot of new activities that you're going to be hearing about soon. All right. Under your consent agenda, folks, in your package, you have the approval of the minutes from the April 7th, regular council meeting. You have the approval of the minutes from the April 14th, special council meeting for personnel. You have approval of the minutes from the April 19th, special council meeting for label levy. You have the approval of the building and wiring permits, approval of the payment of the bills, accept the resignation of Dr. Tim Reese from the Planning Commission, an appointment of Dr. Tim Reese to the Zoning Board of Appeals, appointment of Michael McCauley to the Planning Commission, and we have accepted to execute the cemetery mowing agreement with Sam's Lawn and Garden Service. We did that a while back. And then approved, approval to move the May 5th regular council meeting to the public safety complex that we've been talking about. I would like to have it over there. It would be an open house for the citizens to see, finally, the completion of that complex, and we could start putting it to the sunset, finishing it off, it's being used as training. So does anybody with, on council, want to take anything out of the consent agenda and move it down to the strategic issues for discussion and vote? Hearing none, then I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. I got a motion by Mrs. Alba, seconded by Mr. Pugh. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. All right, we're getting along here, folks. Strategic issues for discussion and vote. We have resolution 2016-08, the city fuel usage policy. Of course, this came out of the issues that we had on the fuel cart. Now we have resolved it, that it stays with the vehicle, and you have a copy of it. Everybody got a chance to read that already?
Yep.
All right. Is there any questions or comments on that?
Comment, this, we didn't have a policy before, did we?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
All right. So I entertain a motion then to accept, to approve resolution 2016-08, city fuel usage policy.
I've made a motion, sir.
I have a motion by Mr. Pugh. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Alba.
Thank you.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have a second and final reading of amending ordinance 398, the building permit fees. That's exactly what our public hearing was. Mr. McClure, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. Continue with economy of words. This was a multi-numbered ordinance, it's 2016-001, amending ordinance number 398, which will ultimately be in our codified ordinances under 1701. We've had a lot of meetings, of course, on the building permit fees, so we had, the permit fees didn't change for a long time since 1986, so we put something in place in December that was effective on January 16th. We've since come back and revisited the issue. We've got a really nice, a simple schedule here that I think the council has, has looked at, and so that's the only change. It's obviously an amendment to the International Property Maintenance Code, wherein our building permit fees are included. So the schedule's been around for everybody to see, and I'll entertain any questions.
All right. Entertain upon maturity for second and final reading, the amending ordinance 398, the building and permit fees. I'd entertain a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Thomas. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Pugh. Discussion?
Yes. The fees in here, Scott, this is a compromise between the original fees, and it's approximately one-half of what the original fees were that we increased to?
Yes, sir. That's my understanding.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And it's now based on a percentage.
Percentage, it's in a moment.
Which means we probably don't have to revisit this any time at all in the future.
I will also let council know that we have been keeping track of any permits that have been done, much to the chagrin of our administrative staff, because you didn't read the ordinance and you passed it anyway without looking at the amounts. We have had to keep track of whatever, if we decide to refund money, because that has been a suggestion to save efficiency and time, we have been keeping track of those so we can make that, that possible if you so choose to make that so. Ambi, I want you to thank Teresa and the staff out there for doing that. It's been a tough time to do this, but we'll be on, we'll move on, and we'll get over it, and we'll, we'll take care of that.
Call for questions.
I got the call for question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. I have a second and final reading of ordinance 367, Article 3, registration of vacant buildings enforcement to HEB to have housing enforcement board. Mr. McClure, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir. Just a real simple modification of the request and direction of council and the mayor. Now, any appeals regarding including on the, inclusion on the vacant building registration list will now go through the housing enforcement board as opposed to the city council, so a real simple strikeout of council and the addition of the housing enforcement board as the authority to review what would only be temporary exemptions, not permanent, only temporary exemptions of vacant building registration.
All right. So we have the maturity upon maturity, the second and final reading of amending ordinance 367, Article 3, registration of vacant buildings, buildings enforcement to the housing enforcement board. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Alba. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mrs. Capery. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. McClure. We appreciate both of those ordinances going through.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll sign off. Do the same thing.
Pass it on down, sign.
All right. It is 10 till 10. Counsel, I would entertain a motion. Oh, what am I thinking? Here we go. Let's go to comments and announcements, Mrs. Alba.
Just one quicky thingy. You know, the planning commission met for our, I think it was our official last meeting for this year. Okay? Okay. Anyways, wanted to say that we are going through, we, we lost Tim Reese, but thank you, Tim, for your hard work.
We, we, we won Michael.
Michael McCauley.
Michael McCauley. So it was a fair trade. I also want to say, too, that the planning commission is, is the, is the commission that looks out after our 2020 comprehensive plan, okay? And it's timed for us as a council because we, it hasn't been changed or updated since 2014, okay? And the last person that did that was Rich Clemmons. So we have to... Clemmons. So we have to go through here every now and then and look at things that we have completed and complete them off and put a date completed or whatever. But the most important thing is we need to bring up together as a commission, new items to add to, you know, because this is a forever living document. That's the way I was always taught. Okay? Right, Tim?
That's right.
It's a forever living document. And so we've created a little sub-commission, or subcommittee. It's gonna be Jody Light, Robert Osborne, Christine Bennett, Anne Lovisey, and myself. We're gonna be reviewing some of the things that have already been concluded. We'll have a meeting on the twenty-fifth of May at six thirty. And, that's all on that, but I want to tell you something else. I don't ever get to go to Stockard Youth Center, and, because I'm always working. But when I got this paper the other day, I was very proud of all this. You see all these little kids? Did you see all these little kids in basketball games or teams? This is out of the Record Delta. Look at all those kids. And then yesterday, which was, whatever day it was, yesterday I was over at Pam's place, just standing out there waiting. And I looked out there in that compound out there, in that fenced yard, and kids were everywhere, and they were having a blast. They were safe. They were secure. And they were having fun. Okay? And I like that. I really, truly like that. So if anybody thinks that Stockard Youth is not doing something for the children in this community, think again.
Three hundred and sixty-five kids involved in the basketball.
And that's something, three hundred and sixty-five kids. Spams on that.
That's one of those.
One a day for a year.
It's awesome. That's all. I'll ask, Mrs. Capery?
Just want to remind everybody, we're having a forum for the city council people who's running. It's gonna be next Monday, April twenty-fifth, at six o'clock at the chapel. Everyone's welcome to come. Also, early voting starts on Wednesday, April twenty-seventh. And I guess everybody goes courthouse, right, for early voting?
Yes.
Okay.
And another thing, we're scheduled to have a strawberry fest, I mean, a meeting on May nineteenth, which is the kids parade on Thursday, May the nineteenth. Are we gonna leave that date for our meeting that week?
May nineteenth.
That's a good question. We normally do. Didn't we last year? Did we just cancel it? We, we, a week after? Did we call?
I think we rescheduled it.
We can, we can discuss that next week. Then, we don't have to make that decision now. We can wait till next week.
We're coming back here again next week.
We'll be over there at P S U.
Okay. Does anybody know if I'm right or wrong about the time on, on that forum? The chapel?
I thought it was at seven.
Oh, I just did an article that'll be in tomorrow's paper about it.
What time is it?
It's at seven.
It's at seven. Sorry.
On campus?
Yeah, Wesley Chapel.
Wesley Chapel. Who's hosting that?
Keith Buchanan is the moderator. Keith Buchanan is the moderator.
The chamber, the record.
But, oh, the, the chamber, the Record Delta, and the Wesley and Student Center.
And the format is two-year terms first, the four-year term second, and the mayor's third. Is that right?
I think so.
And there's also one.
Don't give away your story.
Also one at Chapel Hill. Pardon?
Don't give away your story. You gotta read it in the paper.
Oh, okay. Never mind. Forget what it said.
He went to the meeting.
All right, Mrs. Capery, you got any more?
No.
Thank you so much. Mr. Pugh?
Well, I don't know why either, but I don't, I don't have anything to say tonight. It's been a great meeting tonight. A little long, but I'd like to thank Sam Ludlow for his good presentation on, on the sewer project out there.
What is Tim Rock's position? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I didn't think too. I'm sorry.
He's the sanitary superintendent.
Yeah. All right, and I've got nothing further to say.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Mrs. Sanders?
Well, Mary was talking about how great it is to see the kids at the Stockard Youth Center. I live right beside the city park. It's fantastic to see all the kids in the park. That park is huge, and they do appreciate the new equipment that is in there. And it puts me in a good mood just to hear them laughing and giggling. Also, I'd like to, I've had several people complain to me about the ten o'clock meeting for the lay the levy. Is there a certain reason why it is at ten, at ten o'clock in the morning to do that? Is that something we've already done?
It was the, it's normally the way it is done, but it's the best time that has been done before for everyone to be here.
To be here.
To be there.
Beyond the council members. That what you're saying? Okay. Because I had complaints from the public that they worked and they couldn't get there at ten o'clock. So I just was trying to clear up the reason why we did it at ten o'clock.
I'm a hundred percent for letting all the public come to every meeting, but that's one that we're required by law to have. And the only thing that we do at that meeting is to set the levy, and then we go home. It takes five minutes.
Well, I was just trying to clear up the reason why, because everybody would know. And also, this is my last meeting. I won't be in my fifties, so if you all want to feel sorry for me.
You what? What'd you say?
It's not my last meeting. I'm gonna be in my fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty.
Hey, welcome to the club.
Any advice is welcome here.
Dry my cup.
Yeah, I'm done.
All right. Mr. Thomas?
Well, I do have a couple of things to say. Again, encourage you come to the meetings for, to meet the candidates. And there's one at Chapel Hill also on Tuesday.
Farm beer.
Sponsored by the Farm Beer. Be careful what you read on Facebook, please, and newspapers, and the TV and everything. You know, just do your own research. It's very important. Read all that stuff, but just be careful. Don't take everything that's out there that is maybe considered not factual. I was not gonna bring the subject up until the, things have been on Facebook the last couple of weeks about Mrs. Henderson and her comments at the last council meeting. I just want to say that I've been on council for almost twelve years. Oftentimes, I would bring to former city councils issues that I thought, in my opinion, were a breach of compromise of the city charter code and statutes from the state, and I was basically shut down almost every time. And I was asked to come to a meeting of the C V B many years ago, where I attended it because there were concerns about what was going on. And I was shocked at the meeting the way the mayor and the president of chamber of Congress were treated. I went home, called my attorney as a private citizen, and said, I'm just disgusted with what I saw this evening. I want to do something about it. I want to put a stop to it in an appropriate way. And he said, please come to my office tomorrow morning. And I did. And I was pleasantly surprised that there were many citizens that felt the way I did. I hope this gets on Facebook also. And I have a, I've asked Mr. Pugh to read headlines from an article of August the eleventh, two thousand ten. There are twenty to twenty-five articles in Record Delta and Inner Mountain covering a protracted litigation. And I have never divulged any information regarding the negotiations, mediation of that settlement. But if you want to get the information, go to the Record Delta, the Inner Mountain. You can do it. You can get all those articles in the past. You also can go to the courthouse as a matter of public record. But Ron, I, I would ask you to read this, please, for me, since I can't. And it's only gonna take about a minute to two minutes.
It won't take long, because I'm not gonna read the entire article, just first four paragraphs.
And the headline.
And the headline. And by the way, it was written by our colleague here, Miss Katie Cuba.
Miskin.
Miskin. The headline says, "Plaintiffs Prevail, Comma, Period. Judge Issues Sweeping Legal Blow to City and C V B Who Must Pay One Hundred Sixty Thousand Dollars in Legal Fees." "The eleven plaintiffs in the lawsuit against the city of Buchanan and the Buchanan Convention and Visitors Bureau walked away from court Monday with a big victory as the case came to a conclusion pending any appeal. Judge John Henning ruled that the city and C V B must pay one hundred sixty thousand dollars in legal costs accrued by the plaintiffs, while striking down a request from the C V B to be reimbursed for the cost of the property in dispute. The judge also left no doubt as to which party won the case, which was settled in March. Henning said the plaintiffs Frank Hartman II, C J Rylands, Bryson Van Nostrand, Mike Lochney, Damon Cater, Dave Thomas, Dennis Alexander, Sam Nolte, Nathan Fiddy, Michael Oldiger, and Jane Helmig didn't just substantially prevail, they prevailed, period." And that's what you asked me to read.
Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And just for citizens' sake, the reason why I allowed him to read that is because he's a rebuttal to an accusation made at the last meeting. Because that accusation was made without him knowing, he should have the opportunity to rebut that, that, that accusation. So I think he did so, and we appreciate that, Mr. Thomas. It is my comment time. I got a couple of comments. I want to thank Christine for being here tonight and lighting this again. I think the city should move forward and start getting things done in that way. I would encourage the high school to also start engaging in it, and perhaps the leadership at the high school may try to do that as well. I appreciate Rob Hitten being here with the Development Authority. They are always trying to think outside of the box and figure out ways. I feared you were bailed by now.
You got hot.
We appreciate you all always thinking out of the box. We've got a lot to do, to think about as far as this proposal goes, but I know you'll have many, many more that the city can team up with on the Development Authority. Of course, I want to thank Mr. Diggas coming in. Our C D A did all the work on the sanitary sewer rate analysis. One other thing, last week, it was asked by Mr. Skidmore that, about the city charter. Let me ask you this. Do you live in the city or are you resident in the city?
No.
Okay.
I have properties in the city.
Okay, you have properties in the city, so you couldn't vote in the city. How about the grumbines? Do you live in the city or registered in the city?
Yes.
You could take up a, with the charter, there is the possibility to be able to look at in July, I mean, I'm sorry, in November, to have a referendum on the ballot to change the charter. Okay? How that would work is, because of the general election, you have to have an election to establish a charter committee. To have a charter committee, you have to go before the voters. And we could team up with the county commission during the general election. That would save a lot of money as far as having a special election. The best way to do it, and it was done before, that the mayor and council took on the opportunity. And I believe council is ready to look at changing the charter. Am I not mistaken on that? I might remind you, the only reason I believe the charter failed the last time is because you were trying to take away the fact that the mayor could be, get, the vote for the mayor was gonna be a manager, council, form of government, which means that the council elected its, kind of like what Bridgeport does, elects its mayor from within on a yearly basis on the council. I think that's why it failed. But we need a city manager. You're absolutely right. I, I am a proponent for mayor, manager, mayor, form of government, where the city manager does the day-to-day jobs of running the city, CEO. The mayor does still get elected, so you get to vote for who your mayor is. Your mayor should be out promoting your city. They need to be out in the communities. They need to be out networking with other cities and with industries. That's what a mayor should be doing, should be your cheerleader. I think you should vote that person as a citizen. That's what I think. Moving on along. So you get this committee together. We could have a vote in November. Just one second, because I'm not done yet. It goes a lot further. Then you start a timeline of about six months of having this committee form and look at redoing the charter, however you want to propose it to the citizens. You could possibly, possibly have a referendum for a charter in July of two thousand sixteen. I would suggest that because you would need to add.
Seventeen.
I'm sorry, seventeen, because you would need the budget, about the fifteen to twenty thousand dollars that a special election would cost. That you would go through the city charter to look at. So there's two ways to make it happen. One, you get with the state code, which is the way that when you change a charter for a referendum. And second, since you can't have it with a regular county election, the city charter, and that exact, tells you exactly how you would do an election from within the municipality. You had a question?
No, I just had a comment on that. I think he took what we said last week, the wrong, the last meeting, the wrong way.
Oh.
We don't want a city manager. There's just some things in the charter that are outdated that need to be updated.
Yes.
We do not think a city manager is what Buchanan needs. We think a mayor is exactly what Buchanan needs.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor and.
The new.
A city manager. That's why we're losing Michael Dolls.
Mayor, manager, there is, there is, isn't there a mayor-manager form like those?
Yes, there is.
What's that? Yes.
Mayor, manager, city manager, sanitary maintenance.
Yeah.
All right. Either way, you can do that. But you could, what I'm telling you is that by November, you save the city a lot of money. If you want to change a charter, we're looking at changing the charter in other ways through codification, but this is a great example of how we can do that. So anybody, any citizen of the city of Buchanan that can vote on that, please do let us know. And if you want to be a leader of that, let me know. I know how to do it, because I was involved in the last process with the mayor as well.
I think that's where a town hall meeting is extremely important.
We could do that. Absolutely. I'm just telling you how it would work, and it could be done. You can have a new charter by two thousand seventeen of July.
Mr. Mayor, I think maybe we should make a copy and run off maybe of the city charter.
It's online.
Okay.
It's online. I don't need to do that.
All right, let me finish up with my stuff. I just wanted to put that out there. What else do I have? I think we need to look at a commission as well, a resolution for the drug thing. All right, having said that, counsel, I'd entertain a motion for an executive session for West Virginia Court six dash nine eight dash four. I got a motion, I guess. Second all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are now in executive session.
I got extra copies of that article, too.
Well, don't read this.
I thought Michael, Kate, Michael.